It is six o'clock. I would like to call this meeting of the Robbinsdale Area School School Board to order. Today is Monday, July 21, 2005, and we are in the Education Service Center boardroom. Would the clerk please call the roll?
With pleasure. Director Bassett?
Here.
Director Bowman is here. Chair Evans Becker?
Here.
Director Hildenbrand?
Here.
Director Holmes?
Here.
Director Long?
Here.
Director Wuto?
Yeah.
And Dr. Stallow?
Here.
We are all present.
Thank you. All ready. First item up is approval of our agenda. Do I have a move to approve the agenda?
I'll move it.
Moved by Director Bowman?
Seconded.
Seconded by Director Wuto. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Director Evans Becker or Chair Evans Becker, I'd like to add something to the agenda. Don't share any...
Motion?
Yeah, I'm just waiting for you to say. Yeah, I'd like to add infraction of the bylaws. The agenda. And if we could probably add that...
Put that down.
Or is it D? Well, why don't...
I understand. But if we have...
I think it's more appropriate for it to come sooner.
Do you have a... Do you have a second?
That's what I'm asking for. Well, I'm just asking for it to... I'm in the agenda to add bylaw infractions.
Bylaw infractions. Okay.
That's what I'm... That's what my moving, yes.
Okay.
Second.
Moved by Director Bassett, seconded by Director Long. I amend the agenda for bylaw infractions. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Okay, we all need a roll call on that.
And I would like to pose a question, like, are we going to have a moment to discuss it? Or are we... Well, we get to discussion, but we're not there yet. So we have to approve it before we can get to the point of discussion? We don't... This is a shot in the dark? We don't know what it is? No, that's what we've... That's what the past practice is.
No, it's not.
In some cases.
The past practice is to discuss the reason why you want to have it.
Well, because there was an infraction to the bylaws. And so that is really it. And to talk about that as a subject. Don't we have procedure in, I think, Policy 209? If there are infractions that are occurring within our bylaws or our policies? I do believe that there is a process beyond this. And I would look to... I just want to make sure that we're thorough and I get to have my question answered. Thank you very much.
I see a hand over there, Director.
Yeah, just a point of order. The vote is currently pending. I think there was a...
I can't hear you.
The vote is pending. There was a division, so we took a vote, but we don't have the results yet. So I think it would be...
I think you're right.
Okay.
Okay, so we need to finish off our vote.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
Director Bassett?
Yes.
Director Bowman votes no. Chair Evans Becker?
No.
Director Hildenbrand?
No.
Director Holmes?
Yes.
Director Long?
Yes.
Director Wuto?
Yes.
Morrison carries.
We will add that. We will put it down under C. We'll make it D in bylaw infractions. Okay.
Wait.
In which section?
Which section?
New business.
Okay.
New business, D. Okay. Next thing up is approving the amended agenda.
Chair, I'm sorry. I didn't really quite catch where you were saying that you wanted to insert it.
New business, item number five, D.
I would ask that we have that be item C because I think it informs the next one that comes up after that. It's relevant. And they are separate issues. So I would just recommend that we talk about infractions before we go into anything else. Just a simple change from C to U. We often talk about... We're deserting. So C as opposed to D.
I think I'm keeping it at D. Appeal the decision? Okay. Um, I have two people who want to appeal the decision. Do I have more than... Do I have two more people who want to appeal that decision?
Wait a minute.
How do you take a motion on that?
Appeal Chair's decision.
So do we take a vote? It requires two-thirds to overturn the Chair's decision?
I need three more people.
She wants to leave it at D.
Well, I heard all that. I didn't...
So I have Director Bassett appealing the decision. Director Holmes appealing to the decision. Do I have?
Director Long.
And Director Long. I need two more people to appeal the decision.
Two more?
It takes two-thirds.
For to rule the position of the Chair?
Mm-hmm. Okay. We'll keep it at D. Director Bassett?
A point of privilege. Chair, I feel like that a discussion of an infraction of our bylaws is a significant thing. And to try to shut that down or change it, and I've expressed how important it is in the order, because the issue that you would have follow it or precede it is inappropriate without some further discussion of the infraction itself. And so I think that the issue supersedes you wanting to do the placement of it. In fact, I would argue that it probably should be even higher on the agenda, quite frankly, because an infraction of our bylaws is serious. It's one of the most... That's what our government documents are. That's like the Constitution. And infractions of the Constitution when people are not willing to challenge it. The bylaws are the Constitution of this school board. And I think it's an important of issue. I didn't press for it to go higher on the agenda. Although I considered it. All I'm saying is I think it should precede the issue that follows. It should go before. It should be C, and then we could talk about C to become D. And I think it's kind of preemptive, authoritarianism, and inappropriate.
Okay, thank you.
What... Where's the harm? And I will further say, I really resent including legal counsel in the discussions of this board. Because boards before you function without having a legal interjection in the midst of a meeting? That is the very thing that keeps this board from trying to work toward consensus as opposed to authoritarian rule. Consensus is the order of school boards pretty much across this state. I think that the kind of actions that I see happening routinely for our board are troublesome to me. I haven't disparaged anyone. I never swear at a meeting. I've never sworn in 23 years. I'm simply stating my position. I think it's inappropriate. I think it's authoritarianism, and I resent it. There's not a place for the legal counsel. Typically, the board determines and directs the Chair or anybody else to impose or to request legal counsel. That is not a standard practice at board meetings to have legal counsel interject anytime conversation wants to be shut down. So what I have to say about that. And so... My original issue is for you to withdraw that. And the maker who said she was appealing it and to place it, as I asked, at C rather than D. And we can just move along and require all this legal wrangling. If we're all willing to... If the vote has passed to put it on the agenda, and I'm asking you as the maker to place it in a certain place because I think it's relevant. I would like the courtesy of having that respected.
Thank you. However, it's not just authoritarianism. I had support of the board on the placement. Director Bowman?
Oh, um, are we going to move on the agenda item? I mean, we're going to vote on the amended agenda?
Um, yes. So I need a motion to approve the amended agenda.
So moved.
Moved by Director Bowman.
Seconded.
Seconded by Director Wuto.
With the amendment.
Amended. And it's going to be D, not C. Okay, all in favor, please say aye of the agenda amended with our new item being item number D. Please say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay.
Nay.
I think that the ayes have it, but I can take a vote on that.
Great, I'm ready. Director Bassett?
No.
Director Bowman votes yes. Chair Evans Becker?
Yes.
Chair... I mean, excuse me. Director Hildenbrand?
Yes.
Director Holmes?
No.
Director Long?
No.
Director Wuto?
Yes.
Okay, we have an agenda. Number four on the agenda is the consent agenda. Items for the consent agenda are routine in nature and are approved in a single motion. There is no separate discussion of these items unless a board member so requests, in which case the item would be removed as a consent agenda item and addressed. Consent agenda items include administrative, personal matters, and financial matters. Do I have a move to approve the consent agenda? Director Holmes?
Chair, can I pull the CISO contract, please?
Yep. Anything else? Do I have a move to approve the agenda minus the CISO contract?
So moved.
Moved by Director Hildenbrand, seconded by someone? Director Wuto? Okay, this is a roll call vote. We are going to have a roll call vote on the consent agenda minus the CISO contract. When you're ready, Director.
Director Bassett? Director Bowman abstains. Chair Evans Becker?
Yes.
Director Hildenbrand?
Yes.
Director Holmes?
No.
Director Long?
No.
Director Wuto?
Yes.
Okay, so we have...
It passes.
Four yes, two no, and one abstention. So the consent agenda passes with the CISO contract pulled. Do I have a motion to approve the CISO contract? First, we have to have a... It's been moved. Is there a second?
A second.
It's been moved and seconded, now we can have a conversation. Director Holmes, did you have something you wanted to say?
I did. I just viewed transportation as a major component of a successfully-run school district. So when we're changing direction, because it was a posted position and I recognize we have a memo explaining the difficulty of the hiring pool, I just wanted to circle back on some points and talk through them just based on previous information that had come from administration before. First point is, why would it be starting in November, two months into the school date?
Good evening, everyone. When the previous Director of Transportation decided to resign from her position, she provided us with two weeks' notice. The school was in session. We were looking at, I believe it was like the end of April, so we still had a good couple, five, six weeks to have operations going. At that time, we entered into a short-term agreement with CISO. And when that... And when I say short-term, it was a three-month agreement. That was a rolling agreement, meaning if we didn't notify within a certain period of time, it got extended. Given that where we are today with this contract, that short-term agreement is still in place, so therefore this wouldn't start until November because then it's the expiration of that short-term agreement that was in place. And this goes in then to a full, the remainder of the fiscal year.
Continue. And then I wanted to discuss the rate of $10,000 a month with an auto 4% fee increase beginning January 27. We're just obviously up against some struggles here in, you know, nine bargaining units. So 4% seems above where we should be. Is there flexibility in that? Was there pushback on that? Can we ax that?
I would say with this con... I mean, we have the opportunity. The intent is not to have this be an agreement in perpetuity. The intent is to have this agreement in place so we can continue with the function and operations of transportation and go back out and search for, give it another run as far as a candidate and an employee in District One who is... can represent what we need them to represent. So in looking at what does a future dollar amount hold? If that... And Director Holmes, I'm sorry, FY '27, correct?
Right.
That's another... It's the completion of this year. It would start again. I would say, is there opportunity to go back and redo? Like, I don't know what that's going to look like. We might not even need the contract. So I would say...
And I recognize that. And I know it was expressed on the May 13 meeting by the superintendent. It's an important position, and she thought that that person would be giving expert advice. So I guess that's why I don't want to get locked into a contract, especially my third point that has an inability to cancel clause unless we pay the remainder of the contract. So how does that fall as you're looking for that position to fill it? Because that's going to put us on the hook. If we find somebody in a couple of months, then we've got to pay out the remainder of that contract, is my understanding.
I would presume we wouldn't be posting that position until we get it kind of into the heart of winter. And because typically, people that are searching for other employ aren't doing it at the... Especially in this position, aren't doing it in September or October. They start looking more in the January, February timeline because they're looking at finishing up their existing position. Presumably, they're in another school district and looking to then maybe onboard with us. So the intent would not be to post any time, probably, until we hit the holidays, to be honest with you. And so then that aligns more or less with the intent to non-renew and the notification of that.
Thank you for the explanation and additional information. I just... This is... There are too many unknowns with me on this contract. It's a vendor-friendly contract. And just knowing the financial straits we're in, I will not be supporting this. Thank you.
Other questions? If not, let's...
One more question.
Pardon me?
They were good questions.
Yes, thank you. Let's do a vote. It'll be a roll call vote because it involves money.
CISO contract. Director Bassett? And we are voting... Can you restate it?
Yes. We are voting on the CISO contract. Accepting the CISO contract. The one that was pulled from the consent agenda.
Yeah.
It's...
I'm going to abstain from that.
Director Bowman votes yes. Chair Evans Becker?
Yes.
Director Hildenbrand?
Yes.
Director Holmes?
No.
Director Long?
No.
Director Wuto?
Yes.
Fourth, three, with one abstention.
That means it carries. We have a CISO contract. Sorry about that. My computer is not working. All right, the next thing on our agenda is new business. And the first item is the custodial grievance. Dr. McDowell?
Thank you, Madam Chair, School Board, Superintendent Stallow. We have a Level Three grievance hearing. You were given a memo on that, not different than the last board meeting. But the district has followed the process for progressive discipline as it's laid out in the contract, in the bargaining agreement. And the recommendation for you to consider is to advance this to arbitration in accordance with the terms of that contract and working agreement.
A deadline, I ask?
Yes, we are. This is one of those, again, where it's a 15-day from the beginning. We're currently at day 12. So it would be something where we need to come to some resolution with the bargaining group by Friday.
Okay. So do I have a question?
So how many grievances now do we currently have going with SEIU?
I do not have that answer. I don't know that without Executive Director O'Hern here.
Okay. Okay, do I have a motion to forego the hearing and refer the matter to arbitration?
Yep, I'll move approval of creating that motion or moving that motion forward.
Director Bowman has moved to forego the hearing and refer the matter to arbitration. Sir, a second?
Second.
Seconded by Director Wuto. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Nay.
No.
Okay, so we have referred that one on to arbitration. Okay. Resolution for the acceptance of donations. We're doing donations every meeting now so that we can get our thank yous out in a more timely manner. So do I have someone making... Moving to accept the donations? Thank you. Director Bassett has moved it.
I'll second.
Director Holmes has seconded it. Roll call vote.
Sounds great, I'm ready.
Okay.
Director Bassett?
Yes.
Director Bowman votes yes. Chair Evans Becker?
I vote yes.
Director Hildenbrand?
Yes.
Director Holmes?
Yes.
Director Long?
Yes.
Director Wuto?
Yes.
We... It's unanimous.
We have accepted the donations, and we are very grateful for getting them. Thank you. Next item on our agenda is a special meeting pursuant to the district's bylaws. Directors Long, Bassett, and Holmes have called for a special meeting of the board. The district's bylaws give three board members the right to formally request that the board assemble for a special meeting. However, the board's legal counsel has determined that the bylaws do not give three board members the right to determine when the special meeting will be held or the agenda for the meeting. The board has the authority to decide those matters. Director Long, Bassett, and Holmes have requested a special meeting to consider the following items. One, review of budget items. A, family literacy program. B, cabinet market rate increases. C, newly created positions as specified May 13, 2025, including status and salaries. D, reimagine Vision 2030 budget and year-to-date spending. E, consent agenda policy draft proposal. F, other. Two, board superintendent and community communications and expectations. Three, policy committee versus policy as a whole. The board has already voted on some of these items, and another vote would require a motion to reconsider. Robert's Rules of Order states, "To provide usefulness and protection against abuse, the motion to reconsider can be made only by a member who voted on the prevailing side." Additionally, Robert's Rules of Order state that the motion to reconsider must be moved either on the same day or the original motion was taken or on the next succeeding day within the same session on which a business meeting is held. Finally, Robert's Rules of Order state that a motion to reconsider is out of order if there has been an affirmative vote on whose provisions have already partly been carried out. In regard to budget items 1A, B, and C, the board has voted to approve the budget. The new budget is already being implemented. Under Robert's Rules of Order, budget items... Oh, sorry. Thank you. Budget items 1A, 1B, and 1C cannot be reconsidered. Budget item D, the reimagine Vision 2030 budget, was shared with board members today. Budget item E, the consent agenda policy draft proposal, it would be more appropriate if that would be forwarded to the policy committee for consideration. Item two is titled, "Board Superintendent, Community Communication, and Expectations." This matter can be addressed as part of the study session, Agenda Item 7A and B, this evening. Article eight, Section two of the superintendent's contract requires the board and superintendent to annually determine goals and objectives for the superintendent. Article four, Section two of the superintendent's contract states that no later than August 1, 2024, and at least annually thereafter, the school board and superintendent shall meet to discuss and process the process and procedures for how the school board and superintendent will communicate and work together. We are addressing these matters this evening under study session on Agenda Item 7A and B. Item three is titled, "The Policy Committee Versus Policy of the Whole." We are discussing the policy committee already on the study agenda later tonight. This issue is on our agenda for tonight. The only item that I have not addressed is budget item 1F, which is titled, "Other." By law, we cannot hold a special meeting without identifying specific purpose. As a result, we cannot hold a special meeting to consider unspecified purpose such as "other." At this time, I would like to make two motions. First, I move for the board to determine that budget items 1A, 1B, and 1C cannot be reconsidered at a special meeting because, one, the board has already voted on those items; two, the budget items have been carried out in whole or in part; three, a motion to reconsider was not made the same day as the original vote or the following day; and four, no board member who voted in favor of the budget items has brought the motion to reconsider. Sir, a second?
Second.
Seconded by Director Wuto. Okay, discussion. Director Holmes?
Did you prepare that by yourself, Chair?
No.
Can you elaborate, please?
It was a group effort. I worked with legal counsel.
Worked with legal counsel, thank you.
I want to keep things legal.
It's legal. I had two years prior done the exact same thing, and you were Chair then, and we had the special meeting. Stifling discussion, as Director Bassett alluded to earlier in this meeting, is not good governance. It's clear, crystal clear, on how most of these votes go. But when you shut down discussion and call in legal to silence board members, I am floored that we're at this point.
I knew...
Going further, you've sent us an email saying that you've fielded complaints or questions. You are supposed to facilitate and bring discussion to the table, not make unilateral decisions.
I don't know what you're talking about, about that.
Numerous times, the policy committee... You just read a lengthy list of things, and I'm glad we're going to go through them. Policy, I've been following up with emails to you since March, and they've gone unaddressed, ignored. So the facilitation of concerns should be decided with the board in discussions. You have not been granted authority to shut down topics. And then I'm going to also elaborate that this board has a lovely, lovely phrase called, "It's a living, breathing document. Of course, we can revisit conversations."
And the budget.
Including the budget and policies. And I'm basing on what you just recited from Legal's advice that that is not an accurate or fair statement to represent to this community. This board needs to be run by seven directors, not by legal counsel.
That's exactly right.
The budget is a living document in that, once it's enacted by the board, our CFO moves the money around. We are discussing policy committee and other committees this evening. Director Bassett?
I think the hands up here are first.
Hand first.
Director Hildenbrand?
Yeah, I... First of all, I don't think that approaching this discussion with leading questions that are supposed to be gotcha moments is a very kind way, an appropriate way to approach discussion. You know that this was prepared with legal. And in fact, I've heard you many times say that we have to stay within the rules. We have to ensure that we don't break open meeting rules. And so then when you turn around and say that people shouldn't be using legal counsel to ensure that we are within the rules, that we're following protocols, because Robert Rules of Order and anyone who operates with them will tell you that it is very complex and it is very hard to follow. And it is very... very easy to make a mistake in them, that to ask for advice to ensure that we're doing it properly, I don't think that's fair. And I had nothing to do with this. I'm just saying that. I don't blame Greta for doing that. And on top of that, I think that, you know, the district that I work for, legal counsel sits at the meetings and does provide advice to the board on these kinds of issues, and will speak up at meetings to ensure that they're following Robert's Rules of Order and that they're within legal boundaries. So that it's not true, I'm sure not every district does it, but it's not true that no other district does that. And so I think that we should just think about what we want for ourselves, right? We could also lead the way, even if other districts don't do it. So I don't think we need to be comparing. I think we should be thinking about, if we truly want to be following the rules as they stand, it is great that we have legal counsel here to provide advice, because I know for a fact, I am not an expert in Robert's Rules of Order, and I don't think anybody sitting at this table is or can say that they are, even if you know it quite a bit better than I do. And so, again, I've played no part in this agenda setting or anything. I just don't think it's fair to continually be saying that it's wrong to use legal counsel to ensure that we're following rules. Now, if it's truly to stifle voice, that is wrong. But in this case, she's citing rules in terms of how we need to go about addressing issues. That is not wrong, in my view.
These decisions are so important. We have to have legal counsel.
Yeah, and I don't know, I feel like Director Hildenbrand was addressing Director Holmes. I don't know if she wants to respond to that before I go, or?
Chair, I -- sure. Which order would you like me to go in?
Um, I've written my questions down, so I'll follow your direction.
I have my hand up and?
And I think Director Bowman had her hand up too, right?
Not me. I don't have anything to say.
We'll go with you, and then we'll go on second times around if people don't have a.
Okay, so I went through and I looked to see about precedents for doing this. I feel like in the ruling that we got, there was a word added to our bylaws that is not currently in there. It's different when we're talking about "for," to call for a meeting versus call a meeting. What we did was, we have precedents of past practice, so I will pass this out too, along with my interpretation of this. I will also email this to the board members. I would like this, yeah, both of them. Both of them, there's an example of the past precedence with it, where, as Director Holmes has already brought up, I've had talks with Director Basset too, where she has previously had a past precedence of calling a meeting, not calling for a meeting. So I think the interpretation of the language is done in a way so that it appeases certain board members instead of giving recommendations and following through as to what the lawyer is supposed to be doing for us. So I don't really feel like the lawyer that we have is working for the district. I feel like there's an agenda that is going on with this lawyer. And the use has, we've brought this up at several different meetings, has been to stifle certain board members' conversations. Up for now, is this?
Thank you. This way, they did. Okay. Just because we did something in the past, if it wasn't right, doesn't mean that we have to continue doing that. I haven't read this yet, but I'm just saying, if it was done in the past, doesn't mean that we need to do it if it is not the right thing to do. Director Basset?
Chair, I think that the conversation that we're having now is for directors to express their opinions, and I think that it becomes more adversarial than it needs to be when you're rebutting everything when there's no need. So I will just say that it's been past practice. There have been a number of different times when meetings have been called by three directors. It's not been overly used, only on a couple of different occasions. Only one of them was I a part of, but there were others, and they could call a meeting. And then, and they really, at times, didn't even state the agenda. So, and to the point that what has happened in the past may not necessarily go forward. I don't quibble with that. In fact, that really is one of the reasons why I talked about what I wanted to, that infraction, to go first. Because the first step is to talk about the infraction, which was the ignoring of three directors calling for a meeting. That's all our bylaws call for. That was overstepping. Because any of the things that got said a few moments ago could have been said in this special meeting and say, "I think we should redact this, redact that, redact this, redact the other," on the agenda. That wouldn't have harmed it at all. But the issues that were fine to go forward should have been. But more important, as important as that, because issues directors want to talk about, if the focus is to try to find consensus among board directors, which has always been what the board has tried to do, is to find consensus, that's how people learn how to work together. It's not adversarial. To bring an adversarial process into a board meeting is to put in false barriers, is to inhibit conversation, is to inhibit all those things. It's not right. And I would venture to say that, and I appreciate Director Hildenbrand, you giving the example of Minneapolis. Minneapolis has been number one in terms of size in the district, it's been number two in terms of size in the state, rather, and it's been number three. So it's a large district, but very complex, and although the fundamental issues are the same. So I respect that. I don't think I said all districts. I mean, I just want to make that point. I didn't say that. I know that it exists in certain circumstances, and I don't think it's a bad idea to have counsel.
And if I can interrupt you for a point of clarification?
Yes, please.
They have general counsel that is hired by the district, that is a district staff member, not separate, that is working hourly, like we have.
Thank you. Thank you for that clarification, Director Holmes. And I would add too, even the selection of the legal counsel, I recall that when the question came to the full board about whether we should hire additional counsel, and that was a result of a lot of the cross complaints that directors were having with each other, the board said yes. But then the board should have been brought back for the board to actually select the counsel. I think that what has happened is that the chair and superintendent at the time selected the counsel, and that's inappropriate. So I think counsel should have been elected and should be going forward, be selected that's going to represent the board, that the board has a say in who that counsel is. And that's no dispersion on the counsel that got selected necessarily, if they were brought in by certain people to do a certain job. But the board was never included in that. And this is not the first time that various directors have felt that they were not being represented appropriately. So that's just an extra, you know. But I'm saying that I resent having legal counsel interfere in the mechanics of this board. And there's not a director who I've served with who hasn't learned their craft, and at times asked other directors sitting here and talked among each other about what's the most appropriate step to take with regard to Robert's rules. Everybody understands that Robert's rules can be gnarly. I mean, there's no argument there. But directors have sat at this very table, different directors, and have talked together about, "Well, I don't think that's right," or "I think this is right," or "I think that's right." And then we all agree that we're going to move on with whatever the decision is. Over time, that serves to build trust among directors, that serves to reinforce people learning how to work together. If we have to have legal counsel sort through every decision that we're making about just communication, that is a significant red flagging problem, and it's inappropriate and unnecessary. And I'll say, I said it before, and I'll say it again, I resent it. And quite frankly, the legal counsel should work for the entire board. And moreover, I will say, the main point that I wanted to make, and I'm glad I didn't forget it, is because the board determines, directs when legal counsel is included, not the chair solely, not any other director at their discretion. The board determines when we're going to, not the superintendent can do all she needs to do with, first, legal counsel with her team, that's her job. But, you know, we get a lot of feedback about what is the superintendent's role, what's the board's role. The board hires and directs its counsel, the board, not the chair. The chair is directed when to engage with legal counsel. And to do that indiscriminately, that's really, really what our bylaws say, that the board, under the direction of the board, at the approval of the board, engages counsel. And so to have it randomly engaged whenever you feel like you need to do it, you could have come right to that meeting, special session, and say, "As the chair, I've never disrespected you as a chair on purpose. I knew I would." You know, well, I mean, you may feel differently. I'm just saying, I never did it on purpose. So as the chair, if you say, "I think I need legal counsel on something," far be it from me to interfere. In fact, some of the last information that I got from legal counsel, and all information I ever got from legal counsel as the chair, I had them directly send it all to each board director under confidential. Everybody sitting here are adults, full adults, full adults, and can read and write, and we're voted into these offices. And we don't need anybody micromanaging us, other than we ourselves. We're capable of it. The dissension that this board started with set our superintendent on a path that was unfortunate, because she got sent on that path by herself. I'm just saying, it was a lot of chaos. And so any superintendent who starts in chaos has a challenge. She herself is talking.
Are you talking about this superintendent?
Yes, she has, you know, she said publicly recently, you know, and I don't want to get sidetracked on that. You know, she just talked about, it's been a year of challenge. She came at a tough time. Everybody knows that, because everybody's been watching, okay? It was a tough time. And so the only reason I raise it now is, the tough time that this board has had, I see the board trying to get past it. And the barrier to that is always calling legal counsel when people want to talk about something, and doing it when you've not been directed by this board to do so indiscriminately. And that's how I feel. And I don't need to rebut. This is what I have observed, and it needs to stop.
Director Bowman?
I think it turns out this is a lot to unpack. And I, first of all, it's a lot to unpack. And in light of the fact that Director Basset had said she doesn't want to rebuttal, does that mean the rest of us need to be silent?
I can.
And not speak our, not speak our, what we have on our mind? Is that where we're at right now?
I think she meant that I shouldn't say anything.
Oh, that you shouldn't say anything. Okay.
I just wanted clarity on that, because. I don't need to. I didn't extend the whole exchange, but I heard my name.
Man, I, you know, I came with a prepared statement. I came with lots of prepared statements. In light of the communication that's been flowing through this board over the last couple of weeks, one of the things I know, but I'm going to go off script, one of the things I know is that a lot of these allegations are being pointed at me in particular. It's a very personal thing. I was board chair last year. I saw us through the false starts. First of all, when somebody says, "We are trying to get along and make it all better," I have a different view on that. Because last year, when I was board chair, the false starts of mediation, and then that moved into investigations, and that moved into attorneys who quit the board because we were so impossible to work with. While I was chair, you're right, I made the decision that we needed legal representation and protection from ourselves. Because one of the things that I saw happening repeatedly at this board table was people with no expertise attempting to make a case for Robert's rules, or some other rule of law, or for an interpretation of something without the expertise behind it. And so the thing that I did, and I'm very proud of the way in which I acted, because I said, because I said, when we hired our new superintendent, I think it was at that point, or you walked into knowing that we had to do this, we needed legal counsel for the board. And the mistake that everybody makes is that I picked the legal counsel. I did not pick the legal counsel. I didn't even recommend who we should have as legal counsel, because I know about this much when it comes to hiring legal counsel, especially in this environment, because I've never had to hire legal counsel for myself. So we had a meeting, these people seemed to be, they had their credentials, they work specifically with school districts, we hired them. From that point on, the only, I mean, okay, so that's how that happened. The other thing that I'm really amazed at is that, and I want to add, I have some real big resentments too. I really have some resentments about the description, the false narrative, the fake and false narrative that we are using legal counsel to somehow silence people. The only reality is, is we're trying to use legal counsel, from what I see, I have not asked legal counsel for anything since they've been on board. I've never once made that request to, "Let's bring legal counsel in on this," in these six months since I've been off the board, not chair. But I would proudly ask for legal counsel, which I did when I was chair, because guess what? It is not hard for me to say, "I don't have the expertise." I don't know. When it comes to like the thing of the I-Rod, the decision-making, information reaction option and decision, an option that this board needs to have is utilizing correct information about our bylaws, about the rules, about state statutes, without having them hijacked by individuals who believe that they know more. Because that's what's happening here. Our chair, I mean, our board has been hijacked by people who all think that they're being experts. They know more than our superintendent, they know more than our chair, they know more than this. I cannot tell you the number of times I have been belittled and berated by members on this board, and it has nothing to do with whether I've tried to silence people or not. The reality of it is, is when we come to the table and we vote on something, and if you don't prevail, nobody has silenced you. The reality of it is, is that when we vote up here at this table, this is the information, I am not an idiot. I get the information from the sources that are available to us. I know information about governance and about how entities and institutions work, and I base my vote on that. This is not a conspiracy. And it totally amazes me that we have board members that are out here trying to sell the notion that we have some grand conspiracy going on. I really resent that. I resent board members who call outside agencies in to accuse us of not letting that person have a voice, when that person didn't come to us. That person went to an outside agency and brought the outside agency in to yell at us. That's what I resent. Don't sit there, please, and tell us that we are all trying to rebuild. There, I see none of that. I sit here quietly and watch this war go on while we have an incredible staff, and we have an incredible superintendent that are attempting to build something. We have not moved an inch away from the chaos and the hatred that is self-generated on this board, that is nothing but about personalities. We can't have an opinion here before we are forced into, "It's a personality. We don't want you as chair because your personality is just a little strong." I've got resentments too. None of that has led the way to building peace efforts amongst this board. So here's my final closing on that, and that is, the stuff on the legal is done. It was not reconsidered in an appropriate time. If you feel that your voice is being silent, then maybe you need to speak what your voice really is. I sit at this table and I watch this. I don't like this. I don't like this. This isn't the way they do it there. This isn't the way they do it here. Somebody, please, if you are unhappy, rewrite the policy and present it to the policy committee, because that's how it works in an institution. If you're not happy with something, be specific. I'm not going to go through all of your I'm not going to go through all of your homework that you've done and, and try to make sense out of it. None of this even makes sense. So I don't even know where we can go from here. I don't think there is a forward. I think the states should come in and run this school district with Superintendent Stallow because we have proven, in the last two and a half years, we do not have the talent at this table to sit like adults and work out our problems as an honorable board should do. Done.
Okay. We have a motion on the floor.
I just have a one fact, fact correction.
Okay. And so I'm just going to request that people kind of keep it related to the motion. The next person up is Director Holmes and then Director Helen Brandt.
I wrote them down so I could come back. It wasn't an attempt at a gotcha leading question. That email was labeled confidential, there was no other way for me to come around to that, and I'm not going to let it be presented that it was come up by the chair. So it's, it's, it's relevant because I still, it shouldn't have been confidential information anyway. It's this conversation that should be had at, at the table. And again, it's about facilitation for me so the board can speak to one another. That's how we're going to get through these problems. And then beyond that, going into the, the legal costs, it was not this month, but $18,000 in board legal fees the month before. So we've got to start getting our arms around this. And it's not, it, it, I understand the purpose of legal, we all do, the conception of steering the board off, you know, keeping us on the legal path when we're making, you know, policy or coming to it with winter days off or hours, or whatever that is, that comes into, and guiding us there. But nothing else, really. It's, it's not facilitating discussion at the table. That is the role of the chair. And if, if Robert's Rules are too complex, there's training for that and we can all go through that. So it's, I, I think we're making it too complicated with Robert's Rules. Yes, it's huge, it's a book, you know, we all recognize that. Gnarly, that's a good word for Robert's Rules. So again, the problems with having a meeting and discussing, those aren't legal issues. And I guess that's making the case for me because for years, this board has voted 7-0 on budgets. For years, 7-0 on budgets. So questions, I just want to be really clear, questions are not the problem here. We don't want to make the same mistakes again because we did, relevant, I mean, we didn't make cuts, we were making so many cuts last year, they didn't get made. And I've heard Director Bassett says, that's a red flag for process, that something is not happening on our checks and balance level. So that's the goal. And in terms of experts, I've heard compelling testimony from our family literacy folks on funding that they, they can get and go after, and it wasn't accurate. And it might be inaccurate, but let's have the conversation. That's what I'm looking for. We had 15 health service staff send us a letter on all of their expert questions they had on, on choices that we were making. So you know who are the experts for health services? Those staff who live and breathe it. Who's the experts for family literacy? The people who know it, who know the funding for it, who know how to fundraise for it. And it's not saying we're going to change our, our decision possibly because we don't have money for a half a million dollar program, but they offered to fundraise, they offered to go up for grants, and we know we're considering use of buildings, so why couldn't we reposition? I'm just saying there are a lot of questions. I'm not pretending to be an expert on any of that. I'm saying there are experts that have come to us with relevant information that I would like to discuss as a full board. Just to close, the legal process, I was part, I was vice chair at the time. Formal counsel, Martin, did say he wasn't going to work with us. I believe there was a call with him and the superintendent and perhaps the chair, I don't know. And MSBA recommended some law firms that came up. Previous counsel made the call to those two firms, and interviews were made with two firms by the superintendent and the chair. And one was put forward in consent agenda, hence leading to my proposal of a consent agenda policy, because we have way too much stuff moving through consent agenda that needs to be discussed. And just bringing it to the policy committee, that's, that's a conversation I'll get into later because it's not that easy. It's definitely not that easy. Thank you.
Okay. Director Helen Brandt?
I just want to clarify, it was stated earlier that the bylaws talk about how legal counsel should be used. There's no, there's nothing in the bylaws that talk about legal counsel whatsoever. Helen, you did say that. And just to clarify, there's nothing whatsoever about legal counsel, how they should be used and who should be accessing them in the bylaws. So I'm just clarifying.
Legal counsel, you have a finger up?
Yes, I, I actually wanted to address the, the same point that Director Helen Brandt just brought up. It is in Policy 203.1 that the board, I believe recently modified, or at least since the time I've been here, was modified. That policy does grant the board chair the authority to contact legal counsel to seek advice on matters within the board's authority. So that is where the, the full board has granted the chair that authority to, to do so. I also do, just want to speak to the, legal counsel's role is also to ensure that the district is not in legal, at risk of lawsuits over the board's actions. So it is not our role to stifle or tell you who can and cannot speak. It is our role to tell you the proper purpose for a special meeting. What meetings need to be had in open session and what types of discussions are permitted to be had in closed session. Because those types of decisions can all lead to litigation. So I did just want to flag those two points as they are relevant to this discussion. I would also, most of this discussion has not been germane to the motion that is currently pending, so I would encourage the board to, we talked about this in our training as well, to debate the motions that are in front of it rather than the bigger picture.
I don't know what she's talking about. I just want to speak to Director Helen Brandt. If I've misspoke that, I do know that, so I may have, you know, said that, you know, and so, fine. You know, and I think all of the things that just got said by counsel, I already know. I mean, that we do, the board grants certain authority to the chair. Director Holmes is correct. He says, all the things that we talked about, that we suggested the discussion about, could have been handled at a board meeting. All people had to do was say exactly what the attorneys, we've already covered this, I don't think it's appropriate, blah, blah, blah. I mean, the fact of the matter is, is it's not rocket science, it's, it's not. And so there's nothing that required all that. And even that long speech that we just heard from counsel, it's regurgitating stuff that, I know, I'm not pretending to be an expert, I don't think people have to, people do, people get to have an opinion. That doesn't mean they're holding themselves out as experts. It just means they have a viewpoint. And that's the purpose of a board coming together, is for people to, to share their perspectives and come to some conclusions. And that's, usually happens during dialogue among the people who are involved. Does not require a legal assertion to say who can say what and when and about what. That's not the role. That's, that's too costly and unnecessary. Because each director has the authority to vote yes, vote no, abstain, make a comment, and not support something. Nobody's going to march in and say you can't do it. It hasn't happened yet. And it's not going to happen. You know, so, yeah.
Director Holmes and then I think we'll vote. Director Holmes?
I'm going to ask that you withdraw your motion based on what Director Long has supplied in terms of the insertion of one call for versus call a meeting. That's an important distinction, and that I believe is why it went through two years So, you know, I, I, I just, I think the importance here is to have the conversation, and I, that's, that's how we move forward as a board, and that's what's important. If, we've been expressing, three members have been expressing in those meetings, leading up to the vote of the preliminary budget, wanting more conversation, and it was not granted, it was not allowed. Like I said earlier, it was spoken to of, it's a living, breathing document, of course we can come back and discuss that. I think those are false statements now. So I guess, I don't understand, at the beginning of a budget cycle, why we wouldn't have conversation now before we got going so we can focus on the conversations of how this is going to impact student achievement, how it's going to impact student supports, our most marginalized students and families. I, I think that's what we've been talking about, and how there was a, a promise that, yes, we can have additional conversations, we need a preliminary budget by law so our people can get paid. And I went with that, and now to have this with one, one small word in our bylaws. Four. And so I guess that's what it's going to come down to. If this doesn't go through, this is how we are governing. We are governing by majority, we are not governing for consensus, in my opinion.
Thank you. Okay.
He doesn't have the authority to...
So we have a motion on the floor to not...
Chair, can we quash all the side comments, please? There's been a lot of side chatter tonight.
Okay. I guess I was so focused, I wasn't listening. Okay, thank you, yes. Side conversations, comments to yourself unless you're recognized. I mean, inside thoughts.
Can we speak into the mic then because there's some hearing difficulty?
Good for us all to remember. Okay. So the motion on the floor is to determine that budget items 1A, 1B, and 1C cannot be reconsidered at a special meeting. And then it gives reasons. And it was seconded, so all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay.
No.
Okay. The motion passes. Items 1A, 1B, and 1C will not be reconsidered at a special meeting. I have a second motion. I move that the other items proposed for a special meeting are already being considered on the agenda this evening and are not appropriate for a special meeting at this time.
So moved.
I, my move, you seconded it?
I seconded, yes.
Okay. I don't see any hands. All right. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
No.
Okay. The other items? Okay. Now, two motions passed, we won't be discussing those, but the board needs to determine what the purpose of the special meeting will be. So if you request, you requested a special meeting, if we have a proper purpose and we need to have a meeting, we need to say what the purpose of that meeting is so that we can have that meeting. Director Bassett?
Chair, I would suggest that we not necessarily delve into that, because the three directors who call for the special meeting, with the new information we've gotten from this, I would suggest it might be more productive to have those three directors, which would include myself, you know, have a, discuss what we might want to bring to a special meeting.
Okay.
And, and so that makes it moot at this moment.
Agreed. Right, no, I'm not seeing any other comments. We have a new item on our agenda, it's D, the bylaws infractions. Director Bassett?
Well, I, I do want to speak to that because Chair Evans Becker, our bylaws, as they are currently promulgated and approved by this board, irrespective of what legal counsel may have inserted or not, I'm not asserting that. I understand a director has found a word and thinks that's been changed, and so I haven't researched that, but you know, I'm just saying, so the way that they have been up until that point, you know, and the fact that over time, three board directors do have the ability to call a meeting. And they don't have to be as specific as we were. They can just simply say, we want to have a meeting to discuss the budget. Because the budget is a, is a, is a document that can always be amended about approval of the full board. So, you know, so I mean, I'm just saying that the board, we can, we can amend the agenda to say all kinds of things. So I don't want to get bogged down into that, into some possibility. I just want to stick with the fact that the board is the entity, you know, wants three directors, it says right now in our bylaws, three directors can call a meeting. It would have been totally acceptable to me, as one of the people involved, to say, for, for, for the chair to say, to send us a note and say, or send a note to any one of us so we don't have a serial meeting or anything. Well, everybody doesn't, this date, date may not work with everyone. Can we do whatever to come up to an acceptable date? That would be fine with me. Because one of my pet peeves is that often things are scheduled and the full board doesn't know that they're scheduled, or they're scheduled at a time that's inappropriate. I'm not saying that you did it, you do it, but it has happened. Important things happen. I mean, I'm just saying, so, and I have asked at different times, can we change a meeting? Maybe not to you, but to others at different times. And didn't happen, I didn't make a big deal of it, we rolled on. So I, I respect and appreciate in the summertime that we could try to schedule a time when everybody could be present. That carries weight with me because I've been on the other end of it. So I, I would have been fine with that. I think that we don't have procedures in place that limit, add limitations, processes or procedures, or policies to that statement, to that value, that, to that bylaw statement. Another, a work session separate for people to talk about what the, what procedures and policies they might like, and we could send those to a policy committee? That could happen. It's not in place right now. And it was inappropriate for you to determine what process that we needed to use or counsel. That's the board's job. And quite frankly, had you just submitted your, that comment or question to the three of us, I think for myself, I can speak for me, that I would have said, okay, fine, let's figure out a date when everybody can get together. It didn't require that kind of a preemptive strike. And, but that's not even the most important point. The most important point is that the bylaws stand. That is the constitution. Neither you, nor I, nor anyone else can change it and insert a process until the board approves the process. If we don't have one now, and it's imperfect now, then we perhaps can talk about, what do we do to make it more perfected? There's nothing wrong with that. But until that happens, if three directors call for a special meeting, and they do follow what it says that we should do, identify what the subject is, and try to figure out time, it's not for you or anybody else to interfere with that. We have the meeting. When we get to the meeting, if anybody's got something they want to assert, or object to, or, you know, speak to, they can. Nobody's going to stop them.
Director Bowman?
I agree. We have no process in calling a special meeting that is viable. Because the other thing is, is what we're talking about is vague generalities. Three members can call a meeting, for what? This board has proven to be frivolous in some of the things we want to talk about, in my mind. It is my personal opinion. And, and I can point back to it through board record, where, where that stuff is. Tonight, it's already after seven, we've been at this. And, and I would, you know, let's, what I can agree to is to develop a process around calling a special meeting, because here was I disagree with. I don't want three members of the board to go, we're going to have a meeting, and it'll be Thursday night, and it'll be seven o'clock. I'm already working on this job with a gratis situation of 600 bucks a month, and it's already 20 hours a week. When I was chair, it was 40 hours a week. And it's a volunteer position, and my concern is the abuse that's going to happen if we call a meeting every time some three people get together and go, yeah, let's have a meeting about it. And then we want to argue about what can be on the agenda. I'm grateful that Director, Chair Evans Becker went to legal because what it allowed us to see is what can be brought back. Here's one of the issues this board has. It started when I was on this board at the very beginning, two years ago. One of the directors sitting up here wanted to go back to a, to a previous meeting that she had boarded, this person had voted on a particular item and wanted to revote on it. And I'm grateful to see that reconsideration is an avenue that can protect us from some of that frivolous stuff. Can we do a better job of communicating? Yeah, if we're not being screamed at and belittled and told that we don't have any, you know, that we're acting in this way, or we can't even get a sentence in without being argued with. So I'd be more than happy to go with having the seven of us, each one of us can develop a procedure for item number B, here in 5B in the bylaws, which I also want to point out, that in order to change the bylaws, it has to be a two-thirds vote.
Which is five.
Which is five votes. So nothing was, there's been innuendo here at this table tonight that something was slid in, or there's been some words added. Absolutely not true. The bylaws have not been touched. They've sat there... They've sat there as they've sat there since we were elected and beforehand. The approval date on here is the 15th. So there has been nothing added or subtracted by some magical committee sitting out there that's screwing with these rules. Let's reinforce our position for calling a special meeting. Otherwise, we create chaos, which is what this board is really good at. Because three people calling meetings at, at a whim, at a whim, because that's what it'll be, I'm mad because I didn't prevail at the board table. I didn't win at the board table. Let's rehash it. Let's quickly rehash it so that we're within the time limit. And that's what's going to happen exactly. Mark my words, and I want to be on record for that. So I recommend that we, we create a process on how to call a special meeting that, that complements both Robert's rules and our bylaws and what Minnesota School Board would say, and then use that as a launch point or a starting point.
I need for that. Okay. Next up, I have Long, then Hildrebrand, then Wuto, then Bassett.
Yeah, I would really like for us to get to a place where we can, as board members, have conversations about these things. It would have been nice because the bylaws say, call a meeting. But the, the memo that we got added the word, call for a meeting. And so our bylaws do not say that. I even took a screenshot of our bylaws at the time, pulled them up to see what they say. It says, call a meeting. So based off of what is written in our bylaws and what the memo said, there's, there is a difference in it. You know, I would say, being vice chair, I felt like, you know, chair, you and I have worked well together and we've been able to have some tough conversations together. And so I would just hope that going forward, that what we've been able to do, we could do as a whole board. And I don't see anything wrong in having a meeting and discussing these things and bringing up questions and just really discussing them as a board, kind of like how we've done one-on-one with issues. And so for me, to get that where our bylaws don't say that and the word was added into our bylaws in the memo that was sent to us, that part became hard for me to be like, wait a minute, what is going on here? Something's not adding up right. And that's where I'm having issues with this. Because, and then that's where it feels like conversation is being stifled, for me. And especially when we have past precedents where other board members have done this, not only just the makeup of this board, but the makeup of other boards that have come way, 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 way before us.
Thank you. Director Hildrebrand?
Okay, well, I mean, I'm just thinking about this. I think there are several issues. I think one that came up was who, part of this is just who directs the executive secretary's work was one that came out of that. And that hasn't been addressed here and it's not addressed in the bylaws. So that's clearly something that we need to address because that was one of the issues that came up. I also think that, I mean, it's clear the bylaws don't have a process. Also, while three members can call a meeting, you need four to hold a meeting. And so that's also, yes, you have to have.
To pass any, to pass anything.
I suppose.
Yeah.
I mean, in order to, right, to pass anything, to vote on anything, you have to have at least four members. And so that seems to me a little glitch as well. If you, you know, so that, and then another thing that's not clear to me is you're saying there's an infraction. I'm not clear what the infraction is, what and who is being accused of what? And I, that's not, I mean, I think we just need to be clear on that. And also, when you talk about the Constitution, I mean, our Constitution isn't just what's written, it's case law, it's opinions, it's, it's not just what's physically written. So I don't think that's, I mean, your comparison actually includes legal opinions. And so actually, in this case, then, your, your comparison would include the legal opinions that we received. So it actually supports using the legal opinions. Because that's how, how these kinds of documents kind of live and breathe. Because, yeah, they don't always include everything. But I think that what we really, yes, we have something to clear up, but also I, I don't under, it's not been made clear what the accusation is here and to whom.
Director Wuto.
Thank you. Yeah, based on all the information that has been passed, I'll say probably the last 20, 30 minutes on the same subject, it is very clear that the process, procedures are not in place or at least not well identified. I would like to move a motion that we add this to one of our work sessions as a board and then proceed to forward it to the policy committee to look at. So it can be brought back to the board for further discussion.
To be clear, you're having a, we have to, can we do that?
There's no motion pending, so.
We can do that, even though that wasn't perfect. Because we added this item to our agenda. So what you're saying is that what we do is put it on a study session and figure out together how we want to make it work.
Yes. And then pass it on to the policy committee.
And change the bylaws or whatever. Just a second. Moved by Wuto, seconded by Bassett. And I don't see any hands up. All in favor, please. Yes. Can you make those two, two separate? Because we might not have, if we have a work session, it's not guaranteed to produce a policy. Because we're talking about procedures. So it's just a starting conversation to see where we are, what needs to be done, if anything, clarification, correct?
But then if there's anything that needs to be added to the official document, then it might need to go through the policy committee to get.
Or the by, or for bylaws.
Or the bylaws, yeah.
Depending. But, correct me if I'm wrong, don't we just, bylaws aren't a policy, that's a board conversation? What he's saying is, we get together, we discuss it, we figure it out, and it either goes to policy or bylaws or something happens to it. But, right, so like, change them.
What, what session first? If we have an agreement there and it doesn't need to go to the policy committee, then we are done.
There. Good work session.
I was saying.
Excuse me, there's all the side conversation going on. I can't hear what's being talked about.
We're clarifying the motion. And the motion is to bring a discussion about special meetings to a work session. And you want to stop right there?
Correct.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Okay, moved and seconded. I saw your hand, did you?
I did have a question. Just in consideration of the motion that's on the floor, my question would be, are the bylaws about a special meeting suspended until such time? Again, what, what I need to know is, I want to be really clear that one or two or three board members don't give direction to our executive assistant to post a meeting within three hours of getting an email, to occur three nights later. So I just want to be sure that if, if the vote is that we're going to have a process, that we don't do anything, is there an agreement that we won't do anything between now and then to request if we don't have the process laid out? And I, I think the bylaws state that three board members can call the meeting, as you've been discussing. The bylaws do not clarify that the, those members say when it is. There has to be a purpose. It doesn't say the agenda. So I just want to be sure that if this vote gets approved and the decision is that the board as a whole determines and creates the process, then is this piece of it suspended between now and that time taking place?
I saw you nodding, that, that would be, no, not you, Director Bassett?
No, I'm just grabbing my hand.
Using your hand. Okay.
Because to speak to what she just said. I'm, I'm really unclear about what the motion.
The motion is for us in a work session to discuss the, the way we can set up special meet, calling special, calling special meetings. And the suggestion was, in the meantime, we suspend the calling of meetings. But I would say that would have to be with the agreement that we expedite this. Director Bassett?
Well, quite often, I have really worked hard to respect when the superintendent says the board is involved in administrative work. I've resisted that. I think this discussion is a board discussion. And I think that we've already demonstrated, the comments I've heard, people have demonstrated the willingness to incorporate, pay attention to when we, how we do it so that we can make sure we are checking to see when people are available and other kinds of things. I mean, that just makes sense. I think, I also suggested in the last discussion that the three of us who called for the meeting, we didn't even rush to say, oh, we want a meeting now, we want, whenever. We need to have time to come together and to talk about, is there more we want to talk about? We policed ourselves and we put forward ourselves, not to rush forward, but to say we need to sit and talk about, is there, since we have these rulings, what does that mean to some of the agenda items? All of the agenda items weren't my agenda items, but between the three of us. And so we need time to sit and talk about what that is. That is not the business of the superintendent, in, in, in my opinion. And the things that were raised, which is frequency, scheduling, all those kinds of things are not, there are things that if you would just ask me, I would adhere to. You know, they would. I, I would. They're, they're common courtesy, you know? And operating with common courtesy is something that I think we can do. However, I just want to really be clear that things that belong to this board, we already are changing the frequency of the meeting, we have a whole host of other things that have been brought to us by you, Superintendent. I don't think anybody's been kicking and screaming about it. But you are inserting yourself into board work, in my opinion. And I'm allowed my opinion, it's not, it's not a put-down, I'm just saying. If I'm respecting you and your role in your administration, I expect the same, that you will allow board members to work through their stuff. And so, and I'm just sharing that with you because I see a little bit of overreach. And I just want to, I'm not one who talks behind the back, I'm just saying this right here in, in the public, you know? And so, and so to the point, though, about the scheduling, which is really my main point, I just thought I'd share that because I was getting those vibes. I think that our commit, we're not even a committee, the three directors who call for a special meeting can get together and can figure it out and work with it. And then I'm happy to be the one to talk with you, so you're not talking to four people, to talk with you, Chair, about what it is we've determined and what, you know, if there's anything more we want to talk about on the agenda. I mean, if we want to have a special meeting again before this is all resolved, we'll talk with you about that and we'll go forward. And then you can, if you want to talk to Superintendent, you can talk to her, you know? But I'm just saying, that's, that's board work and we can manage it. We don't need to be micromanaged.
I have, I have Superintendent Stallow, then Bowman, then Long, then Wuto.
My, my request, I clearly understand that it's the board's prerogative, I wasn't trying to stop that. My concern and my job, if there's a board meeting being scheduled, I have to have my staff there. And so what I felt, right or wrong, when I got the information that there was a special meeting with the, with the scheduled meeting for barely over 72 hours, I had no idea if I would have my staff available. That's the concern that I have. That is my job.
Sure.
So I can't, my request, as you're developing this process, is that I don't get an email two days from now that says we're going to request a meeting three days from now. And again, we have lives and we have a lot of really important work to do.
Absolutely.
So that's what I am trying to understand, is I just want to be sure that this won't happen tomorrow or the next day. And so we can be clear that if there's a process being developed to call a special meeting, that between now and that time, my request is that since we don't have the process that's clear, we suspend this piece or we don't request a special meeting. Because I can't have, we have two, a meeting every two weeks as is. So I'm going to need more notice than three days' notice if the expectation is, and I would hope you would want the full board there. That would be another concern that I have, is that there are times in the year that any three board members could call a meeting for any reason, knowing perhaps that people are out of town or they're on vacation or it's over the holidays. And I just want us to be really clear that that would never be something that would happen, which is why perhaps we need more detail in those bylaws.
Thank you.
Proceed procedure.
Right. Director Bowman, Long, Wuto, Hildrebrand, and Holmes. Bowman?
A couple of questions for calling a special meeting. Will we be able to have attorneys present? Because again, I don't want to sit in a room where a bunch of non-attorneyed people and non-licensed people.
Please. We, we agreed.
I don't want to sit in a room where all we do is roll hearsay around or we roll around that sense of, this is how I feel about it. If, if we're going to redo, if we're going to have a discussion about the procedure of a special meeting, I want the attorney present. Because, because, and I want to know if we're going to have an attorney present. And then the other thing is, number, the second thing is, since then I'm, I'm down to, I don't, you know, I don't agree that what Dr. Stallow, what happened here, that doctor, that it was overreach on the part of Dr. Stallow. Her job is to manage her staff. And she can't have outsiders come in and dictate to the staff, to a staff that she manages. And that's just bottom line to me. But to go back to it, the question of whether we have an attorney present really matters to me at this point.
Director Long?
I would like to just agree with what Director Bassett had said. I feel like it's overreach. I feel like there are several times when we're trying to have conversations as board members where things are inserted that shouldn't be inserted so that things go a certain way. Could you please not do that? The sighing while I'm talking about something. I don't sit up here and sigh while other people say things in disagreement. So please don't do that to me.
I'm having a heartache.
No comments?
No, I'm not done, but I need a moment right now. That is just rude, sorry. I sit up here and I rarely talk. And when I do, I'd like to at least be able to say what I need to say so that we can move on to the next person and not constantly be interrupted with people's personal judgment. That's not fair. I'm not doing that to other people. I have had a huge, huge issue with, we're supposed to be the supervisor, the boss for one employee. And the lines are often extremely blurred in a way where we never really are the bosses, we more are the employees. And so I'm done with being an employee. We need to follow what our bylaws said. We've already had a discussion here at the table about us coming back and letting you guys know when we're thinking we'll have this special meeting and what the agenda will be. And so that is what we will do. Otherwise, if our one employee wants to continue to tell us what we're supposed to be doing, then I'm having an issue with that. No, don't. Don't. No, don't. Don't. Because, no. Because we, I've talked about this at several meetings before, always having attorneys interject on things. Stop. I have a right to say what I want to say. And so, no, this is another brilliant example. What time are we on the clock for this? So that we can count this to see when an attorney, again, is interrupting me, when I'm trying to voice something.
I have asked our attorney to give us points of order when we need a point of order.
Oh, it's, and it's interesting that certain people get points of order, but other people are allowed to continue on with their rhetoric and they don't ever get a point of order. So, community, pay attention. Pay attention, community.
The point of order that I wanted to make is that the comments were, appeared to be getting into the terrain of addressing the performance of the superintendent, which is not, which would be private personnel data, is not an appropriate topic for a public meeting. So I just want to caution the whole board.
Twisting my words.
I would like to caution the whole board to remind them that the, the topic being discussed is about, we, I believe the motion is to move this to a future discussion at a work session. And to remind the board that other topics, particularly those that relate to closed sessions, should not be raised at this time.
Long, do you want to finish?
Just, never mind, because when other people hear a.
Just never mind, because when other people here up at the board have said things that are off topic and not remain to the conversation, they were not objected to. So, community, again, another example of where some board members are being shut out, are being told, no, they can't say things.
Yeah? Director Wutu.
Yeah, I just have a question for counsel. So with the motion on the table, if it's passed, can we pass another motion to suspend the existing bylaws?
Oh, no, no, no.
You can, yes.
Next one is Director Helen Brandon, then Director Holmes.
Yeah, I wanted to make a friendly amendment to the motion to suspend that portion of the bylaws pertaining to the special meeting, the calling of special meetings, only because it is still unclear and we will still have this problem regardless until we make a decision on how these are going to move forward. So if you guys call for another one, which I fully support being able to, the problem will still exist until we're able to resolve this problem, until we're able to resolve the clarity of the bylaws. So I would, I'd like to make a friendly amendment that, what is it? Section?
VB.
Sorry, I should have looked at it more closely.
It's right here.
Section B, 5B would.
Section 5B?
It's VB.
VB, right. Aren't those Roman numeral?
Roman numeral?
Well, five.
5B. Be temporarily suspended until we, and hopefully this would be a very short order brought to work session and we resolve the issues that have come up so that then a special meeting can be called with clarity.
Is that acceptable to the motion maker?
Yes.
Is that acceptable to the secondor?
I don't agree. So I'll just vote, when it's time to vote on it, I'll just vote no. I mean, I'm just saying, I don't agree with that, you know? Because I think the motion stands on its own. If you want to make your own second motion following, make it.
Okay, I have a question. If the secondor doesn't accept it, can someone else accept it?
You could withdraw the motion and make, so have Director Wutu remake the motion if somebody else wants to second it.
Okay. So you need to, we would need to withdraw the motion because the secondor didn't accept it. So then if you remake the motion, you can make the motion with the added part to it.
Yeah, so I do want to move the motion to suspend the current bylaw assistance on calling special meetings and also ask the board to work on this urgently at the next work session.
At the next one?
Yes.
Okay.
I'll second.
And it was seconded. And Director Holmes, you're up.
I'm sorry, don't we need to vote on the first one before we can do another one?
No, it's withdrawn.
Oh, you did. I missed that. Okay, thank you. So that's withdrawn. Is it my turn? Yeah. I don't think we should be suspending any bylaws because we did that with FAC and we have yet to have a conversation on that and that's been asked for as well. They are there for a reason. If we can't, I'm not going to call a special meeting right now, knowing that this is what happened. I respect Molly Olson's executive assistant's time. I've never been rude. I don't think any of us have been. The three-day notice is by statute. That is for calling for meetings, that is a requirement. So that happens. And I think posting, we provided the agenda, making this look like it was some thing that it's not, I just want to caution us there because it was prepared and I don't, doomsday going here isn't. The foundation is there's conversation that wants to be had. So yeah, I can say, you know, a friendly agreement, but I don't, I'm not suspending any bylaws. But of course, I'm not going to turn around in 24 hours and call for one three days from now. I don't think, I think Director Bassett has outlined that. We know what we're going to do and we're going to meet and figure out what we want to talk about because that's what we've been advocating for since we've gone through all of those items in our work sessions, asking for more time, asking for more conversation. And what drove us there is we kept being, saying, yep, we'll get there, we'll get there, and we didn't. So that is one, one process, a tool in our box so we can have conversation and working for consensus in a district that has been divided and has differing opinions and people still coming to us and the challenges we yet to face. I see this as a great opportunity to make a bridge here and bring the community along with us. I've talked about that before. They want to see us talk more. And we're going to have to make some hard conversation or decisions. We all understand that, we just do. So I think more conversation, questions, I'll say it again, are not the problem. Questions are not the problem. Information is gold.
Director Bassett, then Director, you're done? I am, thank you. Director Bassett, then Director Wutu.
Okay. And I think if I understood Director Wutu's last, the last motion that passed, it was just to send this issue to a work session at the next work session. It was time certain, which is pretty soon. So I think that's great. So, but I do want to say that I think in the spirit of what we just talked about these last few minutes about trying to move forward and work together and find consensus, I think it's more respectful of that sentiment if directors hearsay, well, we understand that we can wait till then because we have our own work to do. That's what we're saying. We'll get together and figure it out and then we'll talk to you and we'll figure out where it goes from there.
Or we can talk at the work session.
I'm just saying, I'm just saying, if there's something else, whatever the content is, whenever we get to that place, we'll do that. I mean, and in the meantime, we're going to all come together and talk about what the processes we think should be. We all agree, we're going to have a work session. So I don't, you know, think we need.
It's a needed discussion.
Yeah, it is a needed discussion. But to, the last thing I'll say about this maybe, probably, hopefully, is that Director Helen Brandon said she wasn't sure. I think it was you who said you weren't sure about what I was projecting to.
You just said that there was infraction, but you didn't say who and what specifically the infraction was.
Thank you for that. I got it. I mean, thank you, but I didn't, you know, I thought you said that. And so I'm going to say explicitly, and I think I started out saying it, three directors can call for a board meeting. Three directors did that. The chair unilaterally decided to insert some more processes into that and that wasn't her place to do that. We now have identified a place where we need to do more of that and we can do more of that, but that should have happened without her abridging our rights and the bylaws as they stand to ask for a meeting. That was an infraction. And I think it's important to say that because why have bylaws if the chair or anybody else can just ignore them and insert their own interpretation or whatever? That's what, that's why I made the motion, that's what I felt. And that's what she did because she, you know, called an attorney and got them involved and came up with, in fact, unilaterally decided we're not having the meeting. I was appalled. And because I've been in a number of meetings where people have called a meeting, you go to the meeting and you say what you had to say. And then to have everything on our agenda that we talked about instead of sending out to everybody to have this interpretation through legal, you know, just, you know, all of that. Keep that to yourself and then when you come to the meeting, just say, I don't, for this reason, for that reason, for the other reason, I'm opposed to it. And if it has merit, it will carry the day. I'm just saying that the whole thing was quite offensive and it was an infraction of our standing bylaws as they stand. Our chair took it upon herself to unilaterally dismiss the request of three directors to have a meeting and it was not her place to do so. And as I said a few minutes ago, it makes sense to me if you want to send a note and say, well, you know, some people may not be able to make it, can we maybe move the date? That would have been respectful and it would, not only respectful, it would have been also commensurate with her not preempting three directors. Because we've been functioning so far for quite some time with majority vote and majority has most of the time been four to three and I'm living with it, you know? But the bylaws explicitly say three directors can call a meeting and our chair stepped out of that without authority from the board or direction from the board to do anything other than that. I don't care what the attorney said, the attorney doesn't get to determine preemptively our bylaws because there's nothing wrong with them.
I have a point of order. I think that we need to, we can look at, relook at your motion because I just looked it up and a move to suspend the bylaws is a two-thirds vote, which would be five votes. So can we go back? Can we rescind that motion? Go back to your original one about having it at the meeting and then have a separate motion to, in the interest of expediting things.
May I just make a point of order? The bylaws also explicitly state that Roberts' Rules of Order shall govern the school board and the reason that she pulled the meeting was because the items on the agenda do not, are not allowable under Roberts' Rules of Order. And so I think you could equally say that she explicitly followed the bylaws by not allowing the meeting. So I think again, it comes back to the bylaws being problematic in the way that they're written and so we're going to resolve that. And so I think that we should not be pointing fingers at people, but more at the document. And so let's fix the document.
Okay. So I would like.
Comment here.
Just with the point of order about the motion.
Yes, I have a point about the motion.
I would like to direct a comment to Director Wutu. Can you withdraw your motion and make it be, would you consider withdrawing your motion and making it be for us to discuss it at the next work session, the process of the special, the special meetings?
Without the suspension of the.
And then you can make a second one for the suspension of the bylaws until we figure it out. Otherwise, I think our conversation, we're never going to get anywhere. Does that make sense?
So moved.
Moved, seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we will discuss this at the next work session. Now, is there a motion to suspend the bylaws related to section V, article, 5B?
Yeah, 5B.
Before a motion, I do also want to state that I know the discussion has been about the current call for a meeting by the three directors, okay? We all should remember there is seven of us on the board. So even if it's not you three that may call another meeting, it is very possible that other three members can call another meeting, which is what I want us to caution against till we get this figured out. So suspending is not saying that you three or three directors should not be the ones. Any other three of us can also do the same thing. And to try to avoid that, I do want to motion that we suspend it until we figure the procedure out.
It's been moved and seconded. Okay. It's a two-thirds vote to suspend those bylaws. I don't see any hands right now. And before I see any hands, how about if we vote? I think everybody knows how they're going to vote on this and it will need to be a roll call vote so that we know what number we have. So what we're voting on is to suspend those bylaws until we get it figured out. The bylaws related to special meeting only.
Section 5.
I want to be really clear, it's 5B.
Section 5B and the 5 is a Roman numeral V, right? Okay, thank you. When you're ready.
Director Bassett?
No.
Renee Bowman, Director Bowman votes yes. Chair Evans Becker?
Yes.
Director Helen Brandon?
Yes.
Director Holmes?
No.
Director Long?
No.
Director Wutu?
Yes.
Motion fails.
Pardon me?
Motion fails. We're going to move on. We will have a discussion at our next meeting. The bylaws are not suspended.
Can I just add that the other thing that was missing from this conversation was policy 203, 205 AP, which is still an act of policy, open and closed meetings. If you were to look down to section A, item number two under special meetings, items A through E, you will see that there's a whole bunch of process and none of it makes sense. So it should be, none of it has, seems to have any great and grand purpose anywhere. And what should be included in that is my recommendation is the AP should be discredited as we're trying to get rid of APs or at least fixed in this case. Because this is a word salad going on in this policy 203.
And we will have time at a work session coming up soon. 203?
205 is a 205, 205 AP, open meetings, closed meetings, section four under procedures, item A, two.
That's on my list for the next.
Okay.
Yes. And I think this is part of our policy committee agenda for the next meeting.
Okay. A moment of silence. Future events are going to scroll. I would like a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Moved by Director Bassett, seconded by?
Second.
Director Holmes. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posed. We are adjourned. We will start the work session, the study session by five minutes.
Okay, I'm plugged in.
Oh, that's okay. Doesn't matter.
It is 7:55 as promised. We are back for the school board study session. I'm Rita Evans Becker, school board chair. And we're going to...
Helen Des, at school board.
Connect Wu To, school board.
Kim Mullen, school board.
Bob Dolls, assistant superintendent.
Anthony Wells, executive director of community education athletics and max activities.
Kristen Mohesel, chief financial officer.
Caroline Wong, school board.
Aviva Hillebrand, school board.
Terri Powell, superintendent.
Renee Bowman, clerk on the school board.
Liz Diarra, attorney.
Molly Olson, executive assistant and superintendent of school board.
Thank you. Welcome everybody. We're going to move right away to the purpose and agenda, take it away, superintendent stop.
Excellent. Thank you. The purpose of board study sessions is to have time for board and administration to share information, engage with one another to discuss the business of the school board in order to best prepare and be sure that board members have the information that they need for effective and efficient board decision making. In front of you tonight, we have a working document. We've discussed this multiple times throughout the past year and agreed upon by the majority of the board on April 7th that we would use this at our study sessions. The document provides transparency to our community about the predictable workflow in which board will be engaged throughout the year aligned to the five board governance roles. This working document was created using the annual work that's part of the school board's role as well as forecasting some additional work that we foresee within this year such as the statutory operating debt plan and district needs associated with what comes out of the reimagine Ardell Vision 20 work. This document will be updated and posted. It's how Molly actually, how she tracked the work that we did last year, even though this wasn't a public facing document, this is what we did to be sure that we were tracking and making sure that the board, we were bringing forward to the board information in order for the board to do their role of the board. So as with any working document, the timely and important agenda topics may be added of course however is needed. However, this work is also a way to predict what's next. Superintendent, board chair, worked on this version. Again, it was really carryover as you'll see in this. A lot of this work just becomes what happens every single year. So each night when we talk, when we look at the agenda for the day, we'll do the agenda according to these five roles. So tonight for the agenda, under the district governance and policy, the board's going to have a conversation. There's been some vacancies and some questions about some new works. The board's going to talk about that. Also, a carryover conversation about meals and breaks for board members. Under operation, performance oversight and organizational direction, I'll provide an update on reimagine Ardell, give you some information about that. Also, wanted to just let you know that for action at the next meeting, the Iowa designated meeting will be coming soon. Wanted just to spend some time on that. In the area of board governance, the chair will just briefly share some information. We've got board developments in the next two days. We'll talk about that. Under superintendent relations, there is, according to my contract, it states that there needs to be an annual review of superintendent and board communication. So in the packet is the document that I shared with you last year and we'll be, can discuss changes and requests needed for that. Also, per my contract, in this time of the year, we establish goals for the upcoming year. So we'll, I'll have a chance to at least just share some perspective with what I see are some high areas and then obviously get input from the board as we move forward with that. Under community engagement, again, carryover and making some final decisions about the conversation with land management and tribal life discussion for the evening. And then as soon as we get done about that, we'll move into the closed session for negotiation strategies.
Thank you. Okay. District governance and policy. So, I mean, did anybody have any questions about this document? I mean, it's really a very good guiding overall picture. Director Bassett?
I'm wondering, I, I'm wondering about if there's a way we can actually put, if the staff person's responsible, a column for staff signs, administrative staff signs? Because then the, if the staff person is the executive director, but the responsible person, at the end of the day, the body of the board is responsible, the responsible party for board governance. And so I guess I would like to see who the staff person, column for staff separate than person's responsible because that will tell us who the staff person, if you have assigned superintendent to work with us on a given area. But I'd like to see the school board inserted in all of these responsible parties where the school board has a role. And if you take a look at it again in the future, I'm not suggesting that that, you know, done tonight because some work has gone into this. And I've been to out of town twice, once with a sick relative. And so if I didn't go into this in the greatest detail, but this is the opportunity to share with you and I'm sharing with you now. Is that acceptable to you?
Yes. What I'm hearing is, is instead of where it says person responsible, I need to break that up and have one column so the board is underneath all of, every single one and then a staff person like I have in there on your one side.
It's helpful to know who the staff is that you've assigned and, and I guess I would, the only thing I would say to that is that based on that, is my assumption correct then? If I had a question, I could pose it to both you and that staff person or just to you about any of these?
Yeah.
If we move through the year?
Yeah, and I think that's, that's, and again, this can go off. I use this in a former district as you all know, got it from a different district, used it, this is the way it was done, but we don't even name, I mean, I know who's responsible for all these things. I think it helps the public understand.
Yeah.
Which, which teams are responsible at times about this. So yeah, we can certainly, I can certainly think of...
The question, the question was can that board member that top?
No, and I think when we look at some communications, I think when we look at the communications protocol, I think it's pretty clear what we use this year and where it still states is that all questions come to me.
Okay.
And then, and then I would make sure that the appropriate person gets those and we get all the information back to the board.
Well, I think this, I think that's fair and thank you. So but then knowing who that person is and so in my own mind would be helpful. So thank you for, you know, accepting that.
And I think in most cases, as I look at this, in most cases, the staff person is called out.
Well, it's a separate column because at the end of the day, you're administrative staff. And I think one of the things I'm working on is staying in the administration and their role and the board and their role. And so if that's an administrative staff person who you have assigned, knowing who that is clearly...
So for the first one where it says, I'm sorry for interrupting, but for the first one where it says, district, review district policies per three-year strike, cycle. What I have right now under person's responsible, policy committee and the executive director of HR. So you would like me to have a column that has the executive director of HR and then policy committee, obviously ultimately the board approves.
I think the board should be at all of these. The response, where it's appropriate that the board be... Because if we're going to be asked to vote on it, the board should clearly understand that they have responsibility in a certain area and more so than others. If there's some things that are just purely administrative that we don't need to weigh in on, or think of voting on.
None of it would be, nothing would come in front of the board that there isn't a board role for. And in some cases, it's just a monitoring.
Well, and the board as a board has not really had a conversation to talk about board setting board goals. And they're synonymous often with what the district goals are. We've not had that conversation yet. So I mean, I, I hope we do.
Stay tuned until later this week.
Well, I mean, I'm saying I hope we do, but we haven't had it and so.
Okay. But I would caution against putting a name in there.
Okay.
I like this title there because I like the title the way it is.
I like the title.
I'm comfortable with it.
Because it says you've got it on itself.
Director Holmes?
I was just going to, instead of, maybe it's just the word responsible, maybe it's working parties. You know, I, I don't know if we're getting on the word, because I don't, I don't, I understand what you're saying about responsible, but I don't see creating another column if it's going to be the same. So maybe it's just changing the header of working party or whatever, you know, it is.
That would work for me and inserting the school board in the places where the school board will have to make a decision. Because ultimately, any policy decisions, any policies that come forward have to come before the board. So that's the, the board's ultimately the responsible party there.
Just a second. Correct me if I'm wrong, all of these are board decisions that are going to be made. This whole thing is decisions to be made by the board, every single...
That's exactly what I was going to say. Literally on top, it says board, education agenda and working documents. So that implies that everything on here is work of...
They need an explicit definition that states that should be there. Because I'm saying, I would have asked...
Well, it's my turn. Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah. So I, I, that's, I was going to say that it explicitly says that this is the board's working document and agenda. So seems clear that if that's the heading, all of that falls under the board. And then the policy, for the first one, the policy committee and the executive director of HR work on it and then, then it comes to the board. And then the next one, the superintendent, operational performance strategically, you know, the whole superintendent and district administration work on it and then they bring their work to the board. Am I reading that correctly? Yeah. So it's all under that title and I believe that Caroline is...
Director Wong?
So I just, going back on something else that Director Bassett was saying, one of their, you have listed district administration. So I guess we sussed that out, like what, what does that mean? Who, who would be those? I'm not necessarily saying put people's names in there because, you know, people can come and go, but maybe they're the titles that would be?
So I think if you're, so Director Wong, if you're specifically talking about the operational performance oversight and organizational director, that, is that what you're looking at, that fourth column down?
Yeah.
So that was...
And if you read the district administration...
There were nine teams. So there were nine teams that came before the board this year. Each team that was leading one of the priority work teams and work. So there were probably nine teams, at least three administrators, four administrators for each team. That, that's, that's what that would take then. So there, there are a wide array of administrators and some of it was staff as well that presented on those.
So can we leave it like that on the working document? But every time it comes before us, the names will, would be on it. When, when it comes...
When the presentation came, I was looking for titles though to be on here because that would be good. We have a working document that includes what titles are responsible for these or what titles are...
I don't know what you're going to say. What do you mean like?
Like you have a sponsor for each of like a, sorry.
Co-champions?
Yeah, your champions maybe. It wouldn't be the whole team, right? But it would just be the administration, just administrator that's responsible for whatever academic achievement or student engagement and wellness. Who is that administrator that's responsible? Or the title? Who's the title? Not the... And I, and again, again, we have so many more important things to do. I don't want to belabor this. I want to be sure that I mean any of these though. So there will be nine teams. So under, under those strategic themes, we currently will have nine teams set up next, this year to do the work. So underneath academic achievement, there are three...
So underneath academic achievement, there are three teams. So there'll be at least six co-champions for each of those. So is that what you're asking for, all district administrators?
Does mine not? Can I suggest something? So I see that these are all listed under the themes below.
Yeah.
Maybe you could put the champions on their, on the bottom where you list the theme and the objectives?
Okay.
That might be better, easier.
Oh, on the second page?
Yes, on the second page, maybe that's easier.
That would be, that would.
And then you always refer back to it.
So then you'll know if on December 5th, theme B1 is gonna present, you'll know who those champions are.
Well, you can do that, but still, I would still like the titles
And the dates.
in that little box, not just district administration. I don't know what that is. For me, that could be everyone. Where is it everyone?
There are sometimes instructors, sometimes executive directors, sometimes it's assistant superintendent, sometimes it's principals, sometimes it's assistant principals. It just depends on who's, who's helping lead and work on those teams.
Yeah, because then too, I, I think that that would help then too, if this is gonna be a document that we're gonna move forward, then we at least know what we meant when we said district administration for that column. Like who that included, you know? Because we might forget as years go on.
So, so Molly?
But I'm not asking for names, I just want titles.
So the other thing that will happen, and I, I have to look at how we did it this year, but we eventually will have, you know, on October 3rd, academic achievement one came forward and shared there. So we could have then who those co-champions, the positions of those co-champions of that.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, if you want to listen down below, but so if that came up, who, what is the title that's in charge of that? Is that student services?
These people sign up to be a part of these theme groups. So it's whoever, whoever signs up to be on the team, but there's always gonna be four champions that lead that team.
So who's leading that team? What's the title of the person leading that?
So for each one of these, so, so again, underneath the academic achievement, there's three teams. It's always the goal that there's a district central office administrator and a principal who's leading, who's leading a team behind them in each. And you all saw that, you saw that all year, as, as nine different presentations came forward.
Okay, so then that helps me with understanding.
Okay.
So then could we have whoever that central office title is leading that, just that title?
And a, and a principal, and we could, it's always, it's a principal, yeah.
Yeah. Because then going forward, that would just help to know what titles were involved in what work.
Are we good?
Well, I think, but I thought I heard right away, the superintendent said, yeah, she can do that, what I asked her for.
You thought we all have a line that has the staff person and all that board of education across another column?
And I, and I just, the only other comment I would make is, thank you for having time on the work session for us to collectively get board input. Because it helps me understand where the other directors are coming from and what's important to them. We're trying for consensus around.
Okay, I think we're ready to move on to district governance policy and, district governance and policies. So you have a list of committees here, and I want us to take a look at it. And first off, if we could look at, since the question came up about policy, governance policy? Someone was talking about maybe we should add policy of the whole. Other people are saying our policy committee is just doing amazing work now. So would anybody from the policy committee like to speak, or, yes?
We already do policy approval by the whole, because we have a policy committee that initially pulls together some of the work, does some research, does some background. The other thing that our policy committee does is we read the policy out loud, ver batim, every single policy. And guess what we have discovered? Most of the policies sail through without a problem, because we're not hearing anything that sounds like a problem. When we read it out loud, we're able to pick out those words that we know are gonna best serve our students, or serve this board. An example of that was when I was on the board at 287, and 287 and their strategic plan uses the term of parents, guardians, and caregivers. So in our policy that we were reviewing at the last meeting, the word caregiver was not included. We have included that in our policy, because it holds with what the current word usage is, words matter. So we've updated it that way. And that was a policy we read, and that was the only change in that policy. So we're starting at the beginning, because in my level of knowledge, none of those policies all scare me, because we don't know really when they were approved, we don't know really who signed off on them, the information anonymous lacking. And so we are starting at the beginning and moving through. And therefore, what I've also done was I did some homework, and I will pass this out. And I went ahead and pulled together some information on policy review checklist, which is on page one, creating new policies is on page two, and the committee workflow template is on page three, which gives an example of the work, the overriding work that the policy does. This, I will admit, right up front was done with ChatGPT, because I also know that I have a lack of credibility among the haters on this board, so I pulled, I will pull together. All right, that is why I use GPT. I'm not trying to do something subversive, but this was the easiest way to pull together my knowledge of policy work, so.
Okay. So you're here first?
All I was gonna say is that my, you know, short-term experience that when I started, if the staff person who was on the committee was very, it was very disorganized. I was like, is there even agenda? I don't know what's going on. And now with our current staff liaison bringing, it's much more organized, and we're able to, and the updates from MSBA are really clear, the changes to the law are very clear, and it's really much easier to go through those kinds of changes, so that we're able to work through things in a much more efficient manner, and that has been very, very helpful. So I just wanted to throw that out there, that that has made us much more efficient.
Presentation.
I'm sorry.
Oh, did I interrupt your presentation?
You can finish the rest, Director.
You know, because the other side of it is that when you talk about a committee of the whole, that means you're gonna pull this whole board together, and we're gonna read them word by word to one another. Or we're gonna have a policy committee that's gonna look at it word by word, and is gonna either say, this is ready for the board to take a look at, and this is where the board work comes in place. Because guess what? Because then you, as a board member, you take what we send out to the board, and you review it. If you have questions, if you bring questions forward that we haven't seen from the policy committee, or weren't asked, that's all viable. Does that then cause us, because we have a flow chart, does that then just cause us as a board to go, we think this needs to go back to committee? So that's the point of it, is that if we are a committee of the whole when it comes to these policies, the entire board votes on it. You're utilizing a committee to get through some of the minutia, and add some of the smaller words, and make sure, like the other thing, again, the equity policy isn't listed on so many of them. So those are the little things that we find, if you're having problems with a policy, you're gonna find it at that first read, and then perhaps bring it back to the, and then bring it back to the committee. And that sort of concludes my.
Thank you. Director Wuta?
Yeah, I was gonna say, I attended my first meeting, and that was my first, so the flow was very good. It was very organized, very efficient, to spend the whole time with their moving policies through as they need to, or giving them back to the board to consider. So I can't speak to past experiences, but what happened there was amazing.
I could want to like to say, you're reading the entire policy word for word in the board meeting, some things? Uh, no, thank you. I think, like, yes, she's next.
Okay.
But I would just say, I appreciate the work the policy committee is doing, and this is a lot, and I would not want to put that on the board in addition to everything else that we're trying to go through. Director Holmes?
So I was new to the policy committee this year, something I signed up for, I was looking forward to it, I think it's important. Yes, there was shifting around of administrations assigned to it. In fact, we shut down for fall of April due to that. And I asked the chair to notify the board of that, because that's a major thing, if your policy committee is not working, or not in session. So this goes back to March, that I've been asking to talk about the policy committee, because whether it's a whole, yes, it comes to us as votes, but there's a time and place for more discussion, and that has been a struggle point for this board in terms of what requires more discussion as a whole before it even goes to the policy committee, so we can get our arms around what is being asked. The one that I continue to use and will use is the district phone policy, the electronics policy. It's not a formal name, but it's the one that addresses those areas. And this goes back to process and procedure, and I know in terms of input, who you're talking to, are you talking to stakeholders, are you talking to families, are you talking to students? Those are, those are points that are outlined, that should be coming to policy.
Okay.
And I, I'll get to that chart in a minute. And so when I was coming on, I had emailed and had some questions about, you know, where are we starting, what's the agenda, what's the process? Because it wasn't quite clear to the board from our experiences leading up to new directors coming on board. Because we had work that was supposed to be done, that wasn't the schedule, so that was identified, but it was, it was told to me, well, no, there are things in place, read this, read this. Okay, okay, great, did all of that. And yes, we did do work on the phone policy. We'll come to go to the policy committee meetings, and finding out that that wasn't the case. And so it was, it was grateful, I was grateful that we were gonna, you know, regroup and figure out what are we doing. But for board members who were here last year, we were told there was work being done. Director Bowman just said that, we are starting from scratch. So everybody needs to be well aware of that. One of the meetings we came to, there was a draft chart to address the process we were given, and then that came, and we were given the assignment, okay, leave that meeting and come back with your thoughts on what should, what is missing, what are we gonna talk about, any of those things?
Was that before the new person on the staff came on? Or after the new person on the staff came on?
Since I've been certain. Or was certain. It was given to us, yes, by the superintendent in nature. They were drafting a document that was provided, I think the date on it at that time was December 24, and they hadn't seen it. So we were all supposed to gather input and kind of reflect on where are the holes, what do we want it to look like? Again, when you are talking about this kind of level of routing, who's involved, I think the board should be involved, so you all know what the expectations are. I mean, we are, it was being recreated in terms of how's it gonna look when policy starts, how's it gonna look if the community member comes, what just happened at our listening hour, and I can't even tell you if we've done any work on their request or gotten back to them. So we all given that task, come. I too looked up online and said, okay, what are good practices for policy, and what are the different avenues? And I came with my notes, and it had been redrafted by administration. And so now we were working on a new draft, and I wanted to know if I could hand my notes out, and that was not acceptable. And my colleagues just approved the new document. So I'm concerned that it's being, I don't want to get just one month, because there are pieces on here that need to be talked about as a board. And it was very difficult to have conversation, and I expressed this on to you.
And you were, you mentioned at the board table that you were not meeting.
Okay.
The policy committee wasn't meeting, so people were away.
Sure, but it's a formal, if, if this is a committee of the board, I think the board should be aware of substantial changes, substantial initiatives that are coming along. And so this is all one you should be aware of, that was just newly created. My resignation was due to the environment. It is not a free-flowing of information. New ideas are not accepted or welcomed. It was very difficult to work in, and I don't think it's, the committee is operating as it was just portrayed. If you have, I was never in a session where it was word for word, you must have just started that.
We did at the last meeting you were at.
So I was.
Because, I can give some more history on that. That's because we had gone into chaos. We would have another chance at this.
I would have appreciated the opportunity to talk about the challenges, and the board could have weighed in on expectations of this committee. I've been asking since March to talk about it. It was a struggle. And so for me, it was a struggle. I understand. I did not want to resign from that. You are difficult to have a conversation with.
You stop that right now, because that's more of that death line.
Yeah, but you were sitting here interrupting her, she would have said that.
Wait, wait, stop. Our, our.
This is well documented, I've talked to you about it.
Again, still saying stop.
And you said that you would adjust the behaviors, or you would talk about it. I think it's important that board directors feel comfortable serving on committees. And again, this is a document that you all should be aware of, and now it's morphed into, I guess, a formal process. But I had identified some holes I thought were worth discussing, where's the board's role in it? It's all information that I still have, I'm willing to talk about, that did not happen.
Okay, so we have the historical perspective, and we've heard from the people on the committee saying things are going well, we have checklists, we're reading every single word, we're looking at every of them.
And the reason why we didn't read every single word before you was open up in the last six months of last year in the board meeting. We couldn't get even the policy meetings, we couldn't get there because of the fighting that was going on.
Thank you for raising your hand.
You're welcome. I, for one, would love to hear the, your perspective about some of the challenges that you found, and places that you thought the board should be more active, if we're gonna talk about policy, because the policy development for the district, and where appropriate minister of procedure goes to the administration, but the policy, division, the budget, supervision of our one staff, that is the primary function of the school board. If there are directors who have input that they think the board should review, the board should have an opportunity to review it. And I, for one, would like to hear those comments, and now my own, so thank you for sharing that. My own comments kind of go to, in terms of the culture. I think that there have been numerous times over the last two years, when the policy committee has come forward with policies and done a lot of work, from the whole school room, we got from the MSBA and others, and I from the board table have said, thank you for doing all that. I mean, I've always been appreciative of the work the policy committee does. But, and nobody, and, one of the things that I would say is, is important that if policies come forward that are being contemplated, that they come to a work session before they come to first reading. So I don't have a problem with, because my assumption is that the policy committee will review all those things, and all those things that are just routine in nature, that are just a pass-through from MSBA or other legal. that are just a pass-through from MSBA or other legal or any other thing that we need to interpret. They're looking at that. We appreciate that. We'd like them to keep doing that. If there are some subjects that come forward that, that they think might be controversial for our district or that the board, the school board needs to weigh in if we wanna tailor some policies, that should come to a work session. It's, I mean, it's just not, you know, it's not rocket science, it's not subversive, it's not adversarial. It's just good business, you know, because it should come to the board for discussion so that we can all find common ground, and then it goes to the Policy Committee to hammer it out. I don't think I've ever interfered with the Policy Committee. That's a lot of work. I've never done that.
Thank you. So can we come to consensus that we appreciate the Policy Committee work? And wish them well and keep them as a Policy Committee?
Yes. I find that really interesting that that's the direction that's decided after I've been asking you for conversations since March on the difficulties of it.
I was under the impression that things were going well, and there's a new staff person, they have new procedures, and that things were working well, and I wanna see, I mean, I don't, I don't really wanna, I wanna look ahead. I don't wanna look more, I mean, you explained that it was.
I think that's a different. I'm gonna, I'm gonna quantify. I'm not looking historically. I just took the seat in January, and I flagged you in March immediately. And there were multiple emails, and I included the vice chair, so this is not news. Because that's the agenda setting team, and I actually asked to bring it to a work session. So I know conversations are uncomfortable, but that's okay. That's how we work through it, and we get good procedures and work expectations in committees. And so I think if you're, if we're just gonna push forward and say, oh, we're gonna blast the Policy Committee, no, I'm not in support of that until the whole, the whole board has kind of turns with how this has changed. Because Director Basket just asked me about the holes that I identified. And so this isn't gonna be, because y'all are gonna start watching the time. But I flagged some of those specifically to you, and then I did make copies for everybody to look at because there is a substantial role for the board on the Policy Committee. And that's something that I identified, and it can't just be always turning it over to administration. And we saw that when we had a community member come and ask us to review our policy on magnet age gaps. And I don't think it's an appropriate answer to say, well, we covered that in October, so we'll get back to it in a year. And so it was one of those things where it's kind of really, let's work through the real-life instances that have come to our attention already, because we know that happened. And so where does that fall? How is community gonna expect to be responded to? And then in terms of what Director Basket was talking to, that's where a lot of time needs to go into these because we list them as 200s, 300s, 400s, but we've had a consistent point. If something is gonna be viewed as debatable, the work session should be there. And that's one of the things that I've discussed in the workflow, because it's readings, it's first session, or it's first read, second read. But there's also the option for putting it on our work session. And that has, and then there's also a man encampment role, a board member role, a staff member. There are other examples of our colleagues, counterparts in other organizations, St. Paul in particular, where people can suggest policy, and they have forms that are already done and practices that are working for them. The consent agenda is a policy that we need to do work on or at least have a conversation on, but it doesn't exist for us, so where does that fall into play? These are all conversations that the board should weigh in on.
Did you have your hand up before you?
Okay.
So what we come down to is a whole bunch of words that have always been used. I've been flagged, I've been told, I've been this, I've been that. I wanna know policy numbers. I wanna know, because that's what's never been brought forth to the Policy Committee. We don't know how, wait a minute. I keep getting word salads. If you have something flagged, then list it out. I know for a fact from the last couple of years that you were interested in, I think, from the State Security Committee in the student handle policy and now the phone policy. Those are specifically only the two policies I've ever heard you speak of specifically. And I would love to see a link.
He's so angry.
I'm not. What I'm, what I'm, yes, I am angry at. I'm angry at this, this sense of accusation that we are ignoring you when you do not bring us any work to do. You walked out of that committee.
I did not.
You quit the committee, and what I'm saying is what we need, what we need as a committee to function is we have standard work that needs to be done. That standard work is 100 through 900, reviewing all those policies that are already there and already in place. We will have decisions about APs that need to either be sucked in or pushed out. But if you have specific, one of the things I've not heard from board members, if you have specific policies that you want to amend or change, bring us the list. I wanna see it.
And I'm gonna enter September 15 email from you telling me that work was done on the phone policy that I'm questioning, that you said had occurred and it had not.
Well, it's, it did occur. It did occur.
I'm not gonna take this.
It did occur under Marty Voight. She did it.
This is how.
Marty Voight did it.
Wait, did this not mean?
No, you're lying about that. Because she was done for Marty Voight, and you know it was.
Okay, bring it down. One person talks at a time.
I'm gonna, please, I'm next.
Director Long is next, and Director Wujin, and then Director X.
Yeah, I, just as the vice chair, want to confirm that we have been getting these emails from Director Holmes asking us to talk about the Policy Committee. They have, it has been brought up at agenda setting. It was not put on the work session at all until just today. So that is a long time to wait to kind of address issues. I would hope that we will get better at kind of addressing these issues in a more timely fashion. The other piece of it is, is Director Holmes has brought several different policies to us. Like right away in the beginning when she started, there was a book policy that she brought to us. And she was not on the Policy Committee, and she submitted it to that Policy Committee where it outlined if parents were uncomfortable with a book that was in the library, the steps that they needed to go through.
Prevented book banning.
Yep.
And that's, that was accepted.
That was accepted. Since then, she has brought up the cell phone policy. I have also asked about the cell phone policy and wanting changes to it, especially after attending trainings from MSBA, and I don't feel like those were listened to. Now, there, there have been other concerns too that have arrived about Policy Committee even before Director Holmes was on there. And I was not chair or vice chair at the time, but I believe that that person brought it up at several business meetings that they were not being listened to either. So I guess this, this is still where we are as a board is like, yeah, there are seven of us, but we need to all listen to each other. And we can't just continue to be like, no, 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 you don't get a say, you don't get a spot at this table. That's not right. We were all elected. We all have spots at this table. So we all need to start listening to each other and stop this thing where we're kind of cutting certain people out of things. And listen, let's have a conversation about it, and let's stop, when we have these issues, let's stop waiting so long before we address them. I mean, because time is not healing this wound. It's just making it fester.
I remember in agenda setting, we had so many things that were on the timeline. I mean, we're just like, what can we, already we were going late. So I know that it has been on agenda setting, and can we push that back? Can we push that back?
Yeah, and so I'm hoping too with the start of your parking lot, that maybe we can start doing things in a more timely manner.
I think we all can manage that parking lot. Director, are you done?
Yes.
Director Wu.
Yeah, so I just, I wanted to address, thanks for those comments. I think that a lot of what we are hearing being tonight are things that has happened in the past. Not that they are not relevant now, they are, but I want to encourage us to see a way forward. The charts that we are referencing now has a place that if you have new policy suggestions, a way to bring that forward to the Policy Committee, and we make sure that that is coming on top of the board for discussion. Or if you have a policy that you have things in there that need to be adjusted, there is an entry point for you to bring that to the board or to the Policy Committee for that to be discussed. So let's please give that a chance going forward. If you have those concerns, email it to the right people, and let's see if we can just move forward on these issues that have held us back in the past. I don't think readdressing them today will do us any good. Just my opinion in a way.
Director, thank you.
Director Bass. Yeah, thank you, Director Wu. I, sounds good to me. However, I am interested in whatever that list is because if we're gonna talk about a new flow chart and new process, which is what we're debating and discussing, I would like to know if there's a person who's been on the committee who's actually contemplated and given some thought to some places where we need to review some more. I'd be interested in seeing it. So did you say that you have copies for board members?
They have moved forward with a new flow chart, so that should be distributed to everybody is my point right now. And I have identified some.
Okay, I, I have, I have two things there. One is for any director who's ever been on any committee, what I think is a good practice I try to do is if I know something about work that is happening in any committee, I'll share that. People can accept it or not. So I would be interested in that, and if we're gonna vote on a new flow chart, so I, I don't see it, and I don't, I don't think I have it.
It's not a flow chart.
Well, and I saw a blue chart, you know, so.
It's not new, walking. It's absolutely not new.
Then great. Can we just see the old, if we're gonna have this flow chart, I just wanna see it. And, and if there is some, and not only that, if there is some, some, you know, some input that would be valuable for the board to review, I would like to us to review it. Because I haven't heard anybody say they wanna get all involved in the Policy Committee. I know I am. You know, and he did it on it. However, one of the things I did talk about earlier tonight is the board's function is policy. And if there's some challenges or some holes or some things that we should be aware of in the flow, because it's very difficult, once you approve something, to try and roll it back back, and we just saw that tonight. So I don't want anybody to say, when you saw, you know, the flow chart, if there's some challenges, I don't see, that's probably seven of us. I don't have to see everything. I don't have to. I wanna depend on my colleagues. If they see something or they raise something, I like, I wanna respect that, and that's what I've done with that Policy Committee. But if there's some issues that would be illuminating for this board in terms of policy, that's one of our major jobs. I'd like to see it.
I would like to point out that all Policy Committee meeting agendas are posted online publicly, so anybody and everybody, including all of us sitting here, can look at those agendas, see what policies are coming up. And I believe, I don't get it, but I believe the redlining is on there for all of you to look at ahead of time if you want to. So if you're interested and you wanna see it ahead of time, you can certainly do that. We've only been passing forward, at least the last couple of meetings, ones that have small changes due to legislation or wording such as like, like the food, you know, they changed some of the laws around the food and who can get food and collections having to do with food and things like that for lunch and breakfast, things like that. If, but, but if there was anything that was new or controversial, we would, the whole plan, that whole flow chart talks about sending it to work session first, not to first read. That's the whole point. I think one of the, the issues when I'm hearing, and this is again a clarity thing, is who, who's even in charge of the committee? Like, who's even determining, like, right now, the, the HR senior officer? Executive Director, sorry, is the one kind of putting together the agenda, right? And, and even when it comes to board reports, we're not even sure who's supposed to do it because nobody's the chair of the committee, right? And I think that makes it unclear as to, like, if you say, like, because I would think, let's say, I'm just making this up. I don't wanna be chair, but just to be very clear. But if I were the chair and then you said to me, can we look, can you guys take a look at the, the electronic, you know, device policy? And here are my issues or the areas of concern, and here are my suggestions, right? Then I could make sure it was on the agenda. But right now, there are three board members on there, but none of us are chair, right? And so I think that is a point of clarity maybe that we need to figure out. Or does it go to the executive director of HR and then she puts it, right? I don't know. What I'm saying is it's not clear, and that's one of the issues, right? How does it even get onto the agenda? Because I agree. If you say, I wanna look at it, here are my specific concerns, right? Then we can look at it and then bring it back and say, okay, based on your concerns, here's what we did. What do you think? And bring that to a work session. But we don't have a process for that because I don't even know who, how that works. So I think that is one of the things. But there's no secrecy about what's going to come down the pipe because it's all posted online. So you guys can for sure look at it, and if you have comments, you know, reach out to any one of us who are on the committee and say, hey, I'm concerned about this, and then we're happy to bring your concerns to the Policy Committee and say, you know, this was brought, and so as we're looking at this, we need to put that in the hamper. So at least I'll speak for myself. I'm certainly willing to do that, and anybody, feel free to reach out to me. I'm very happy to do that.
You could reach out to any two people on the Policy Committee. You just couldn't reach out to all three?
No, that's the thing. Okay, I'm just saying, like, whoever you feel comfortable reaching out to. I mean, I, I will be able, I'm happy to say this was brought up by another board member. I wanna make sure it's on the table, right? So I'm putting that out there in the space for me. So anyway, I just, that is one space I see that's a little unclear, and I think that's causing some of the problems.
It would be Director Holmes, Director Bass, and Director Wu.
So then can you help me understand why we didn't talk about the phone policy again? Because we sat in the work session, and the board gave directive and said, kick it back to the Policy Committee. And when I went to broach that, it was not welcomed. It was, we just passed that, we're not talking about that, and that's what we had covered in the work session already, and I had identified already my concerns public to the whole board about the gaps that were there and developing that.
Yep.
To be clear, question? So you had concerns, but the whole rest of the board already passed that one? They passed it?
I don't think they passed a few months before.
Oh, they passed a few months before?
It passed, and I had brought it up at the table. We brought it to a work session. I outlined the concerns, I outlined the holes and how information, this, there was not input gathered properly. It was designated as a controversial or required discussion policy. The board at that work session, a recent work session since it's been passed, agreed to kick it to the Policy Committee.
Okay, got it. Does that make sense? Thank you. And that was, we are supposed to talk about it again.
From, I, from my perspective, when something's been passed within the past couple of months, I, and that comes back to what you were saying earlier at the, you know, with Robert's rules. You can't be consistently going back to something that was just recently passed, so.
But what was given to me at the table was that it's a living, breathing document, and yes, we can talk about that in Policy Committee. And we got the will of the board to do so because it was passed without board discussion, and it was a controversial policy, so we're not living true to our word.
But did you go through a first reading and a second reading?
It did, and it was voted out by the board in November, uh, 2024.
Okay, okay. Okay, Director, are you pausing, Director Holmes? Okay, Director Basket.
Well, I think that, I'm not sure that my first question about that flow chart was, because I was just looking on the thing that's.
Yeah, I saw it's not on there, so we can definitely bring it, or I can bring it to the chair and she can send it out.
Right, or, or um, you can send it to our second check out in the game. Whatever, anyway, anyway.
Yeah.
It, it should come out so that we know what it is. And I am interested in whatever feedback Director Holmes has from her time on that committee about things she wants to highlight for attention from the board. And I think your comments were really good about you don't have a chair. So I mean, I think this further discussion has been helpful because what we were hearing initially is that it's going to be, you know, I mean, good stuff, you know. And so you gotta take the good with the things that we need to still work on. And so if you still need a chair, then I would urge the committee to actually identify a chair for the committee so that we can pass stuff to the committee, and there's a person responsible on the combo to get it, move it through your committee, and get back to the person so they know what happened to it. You know, part of what we talked about a few minutes ago is not having enough procedure around things, and that gets us in trouble. So if we can clarify that, fine, we can move on, you know, about this because that's one of our biggest jobs. Having a chair for that committee is important. And, I'm not, and I'm glad I remembered this, that's not the administration's job. That's not their job. You know, our job is policy. And the, and the support of staff is important, has been important, to have a staff person, but staff should not be driving, setting policy for the school board. Input is one thing. Advice is important. I've never known anybody who didn't want advice from the administration. And does not take away the responsibility of directors who are on that policy committee to do work. And if it's somewhat controversial to bring it back to this full board. And if there's some pop, some places where there's none clarity or issues, then send it to all of us, you know, we sent it through Maui, we can all get it.
Done. Director Roman, then Director Wutao.
Right, I know it's moving forward, what we really need to do is to embrace a process. The other thing is, is that we get nowhere when we talk about things that we brought up that were brought up during times of incredible chaos. At the end of the last school year, there was nothing being done. And then we moved into the new year of the, of this committee and we were floating without a letter. We have no direction. Because the most important thing that we've been tasked with at this point is not the one offs, but getting the full body of work reviewed and approved. And I know for myself, I will feel much more comfortable when we are at a point where we have reviewed and approved all of our documents. It makes the one offs easier. And I am not exaggerating when I say that this information, when you say there's a problem, what does that mean? What kind of a problem? Has there been a problem reported to the school? That's where you've got that policy review checklist that was put together. Is it relevant? Is it being followed? Is it not giving us what we need? Are students suffering? Are there, I mean, what would be a reason? And I don't think that that's an unfair thing to ask, to discover a reason for us to look at a policy to fix it. Because the, otherwise it sounds like just, like there isn't a rhyme or reason to it. And that's what concerns me. Policy work is very regimented from, and it's what everybody hates about policy work because it is so regimented. So I think that right now, all of those, if those documents exist of what needs to be changed or concerns or worries about particular policies, pull them together, send them to Greta and then Greta can forward them to the full committee, which would include Director Hearn's and Ms. Joanna, Joanne, and those people on the committee and they could be looked at fully. But right now, what we're doing is we're arguing about sort of the he said, she said of how it didn't and how it wouldn't and how it can't and this is what didn't. And I think you're sort of responsible, maybe you are. Could we just do a reset and bring forth what people want to see done? Get that documented, create a work schedule around it and move forward. That's what I would ask.
Thank you. If you have trust issues, you can send them to Director Ellen Brand.
What do you mean?
About that.
About anything.
Her concerns, that she said send it to me and we'll get them to the committee. If you have trust issues and you don't want to send it to me.
But wait, why don't we set a protocol? I mean, I, I mean, do we not have a protocol for how we should communicate? Will you send things to the board or not? Or to the chair?
Well, the point of clarification though, if they send them to Greta and then Greta sends it to the committee, are we violating any open?
I would be CC the committee.
Right.
And I'm not asking for any, I'm not asking for them to.
Yeah.
I'm just asking for sending for business. Director Wutao, you're up.
And then it gives another set of eyes to who's getting the information also. That the information formally passed through.
Okay, so send it to me.
The office of, or the chair position.
Okay, Director Wutao.
I, I wanted to suggest that unless it's urgent and needs to be done, it's a, if there are policies that need to be forwarded to the policy committee, I will believe the board to give us. And it's got two meeting sessions, we have one coming up in July, end of July. And so by the second policy meeting after that July, we will give you, or we will give the board who is responsible as a chair so that such policies can be forwarded over to that list.
Sounds great, perfect, sounds great. It means that we're going to give a flow chart? Are you ready?
Well, the flow chart is huge, so I mean, you could send it to.
I'll scan it and send it.
Wait, wait, which flow chart?
I sent the, the updated copy of the flow chart that.
Oh, this one, because I thought you were talking about this Excel spreadsheet. It holds all of our work.
Then I will scan it and send it to.
Okay.
And I can send it to her. And she will.
Okay, great.
Okay, thank you. Director Holmes.
Uh, Director Holmes and then one more. What came to us at listening hour was changing the age for the magnet schools. A problem was specifically identified. A suggestion was mentioned. All of that was given, so. Has that individual been followed up? And where does that fall? Because that's another gap, because it came. And so if we're listening to people, we better have an action item.
But we might just listen to one person or a young.
It's not listening, it's a response. Nowhere did I say we're taking that person's word and changing the policy. But if somebody's taking the time, and that's why I alluded to St. Paul, they have these sheets that they've already created for anybody because that is a reality. People can come to us and suggest policies. And so they have a formal document and presentation because all, those were tools I was trying to bring to the table. By no means expressed that we're taking that person's word and doing policy change. I used it as an identification of a gap that came to us recently and nothing was done on it.
Can you send the community? Do we have a community input form for when some person at the committee has, the community has a good idea, do we have a form like that? Can you, can you send it? We'll get it, we'll just send it to the committee. You do send it. I brought it to the committee. Can you, can you send it and then send it to the committee? By, by, by me?
I will. I just find it concerning that I had, I was a participating committee member and I was bringing tools to the committee and they weren't welcomed. But now that they're being discussed and it's not about rehashing issues and going back, it's the fact that they've never been addressed in the first place. So that's why these uncomfortable conversations are coming out because they weren't being addressed before.
Okay. Moving on from the policy committee, I would like to move to the ad hoc transportation and infrastructure committee.
That's another source one.
Well, if, if, anyway, I, let me, let me start. Okay, then you can talk. All right. Okay, it started out because we had to have, go off to bids. We had to figure out what was going on, whether we worked. At the beginning was, were we going to move a bid? And then, no, we weren't. And then later, we, next year, we worked well for bids and we took care of that. And when we toured the bus garage, it was like, oh my gosh, they're, they're, they're changing the tires so the buses can get into the bus garage. We may need to be also infrastructure. But I would like to suggest that ad hoc committee for transportation has done its work and the facilities and infrastructure committee work, if there is to be some, is, is channeled to the financial advisory council. Because whatever facilities there are, it's going to involve money and we need their input. Can you say that one more time? Okay. Reader's Digest version. Get rid of the ad hoc committee for transportation and infrastructure because bussing part is done and infrastructure is way bigger than the transportation committee. Instead, a lot of the work is being done by the visioning team. And I think we're going to need the input of the FAC on capital and infrastructure. And so any work that would have been done by the ad hoc transportation committee under the guise of facilities, let it go under the financial advisory council. Because if it's facilities, it's going to involve money. Does that make sense?
Ninety percent, I think.
Like, I'll take ninety.
Well, I didn't follow it.
Yeah, okay.
I'll get it.
Director Basset, and then.
Well, as a person who was a part of the committee, I'm not interested in rehashing things. But I do believe that often when you cannot go forward without acknowledging some things that happened in the past, because it's just going to fester if you don't. So I think just like this conversation we just had, we moved past it, we have a resolution. I do feel a certain kind of way about the fact that the transportation and, and infrastructure committee was just abrupt, just not scheduled any needs. And when we had something, we actually began to reach out to the community and have people in law. I do not agree that there was no role for, because just because transportation was moved forward, there still was some infrastructure questions. And in fact, I posed many of them. The next thing I knew, we were getting a report from the administration that a facility study had been done, that the board wasn't even aware of and didn't have any input into, and the facilities turned to the tune of $365,000. Now, I don't know what board, anybody else has been sitting on, but I just know that that was a concern to me and I knew that it was needed and I didn't appreciate it. I'm just going to get that off my chest. I thought it was ill progress. And, but further going forward, I don't see if, I do think that having that, this is the conversation with the FAC about if they're willing to co-work with the infrastructure committee, ad hoc, and until they say yes, the ad hoc infrastructure committee still stands. And then when that committee comes together, those committees can talk about how they want to work together. If they do, maybe they don't. But I do think if we're going to have a conversation in this district about facilities that may end, the road may end up at closing facilities or any other thing, or major investment in facilities, I think that is a school board discussion. And I think that.
It's my turn.
And so I think that if we have ad hoc committees that are comprised of board directors who are getting information contemporaneously with any other citizen group, the buck stops with the board. And I think the board should have information and have some discussion about those things. The FAC, which has some of our community residents on it, is a perfect partner to partner with the infrastructure committee to really have some deeper dive in conversations. I would be open to that as, to, we two are the only ones remaining on the committee. And I'm okay with this suggestion that we perhaps try to have them work together. I don't think there's anything wrong with that. Who wants to make work? But I think, I'm, I'm going on the record with how unhappy I was by the way, just like we just talked about, how the other committee was just shut down, that one was too. And the truth is set you free. I don't believe in carrying stuff into the future, being mad about stuff. I'm, I'm not into that. When, when I say I want to start fresh and go forward, I really mean it. But I really mean it with respect. It's disrespectful the way that committee was managed. And I don't appreciate it. You know, we're going to go forward because it was just stopped. And I would ask, well, I mean, you say, well, we just demanded the committee just even stop having a report on, on the agenda, just stopped. And there was, the committee, community people had been invited to a committee meeting and their understanding is that we were going to go forward as well. Nothing. I didn't go out and make a big deal out of it. But I'm saying that right now, you know, and if we're going to go forward, I think we should. I think it makes sense to maybe have that committee kind of work together with our FAC. It already has community participation on it. And our previous committee did not necessarily, up, had not moved to that place. And I think there's a lot that's going to be talked about related to infrastructure. And I think it's an appropriate conversation for this school board.
I think it's appropriate. Director Long, go ahead.
Okay, when we started that ad hoc committee, we had huge concerns about Durham. And one of the things that we had discussed as a board is we really did not want to continue on with that contract, even though we did. And so that, that ad hoc committee was supposed to be looking into other ways so that we could get away from these outside contracts. And one of the things we discussed was bringing some of our bussing back in house and we were going to start with special ed. And I feel like we never, you know, the board voted on that and that, that, that was one of the things that we wanted that committee to do. And then there was no follow through on that or to bring the, the special ed transportation back in house.
It was talked about in the committee, it was just not feasible. It was. It was. Yeah.
Yeah, but I'm just saying it was never brought back to us as to where that landed or what. I mean, you know, when we, when I was on the board at the time, when that decision was made to go outside and use contractors for our bussing versus our drivers that we had in house. But that was super upsetting to the community because that was, I remember campaigning and people were really upset with the board about that decision that was made. So I don't know. And, and people were really upset with what was happening with Durham. And, and I don't know, when the community gets that upset, I don't know that I want to continue to give somebody my money for that, you know? And so I guess I, my whole thing is I wish that those things could be looked at and I wish that we could figure out a way of having some in-house stuff and not having to deal with outside contractors.
The community talked about that, that we would have to buy so many buses, it would be so expensive that we just, it was completely unfeasible. Also Durham, they had a horrible start. I mean, they just, it was really, really bad when they started. But they turned it around and they had that, they got the bus drivers training, they got them in the pipeline, they satisfied the parents now. Yes, totally acknowledging, it was a bad show to start with. But they did the work and they, they earned it back. I mean, the amount of complaints were like. And so they earned it back. And I, I give them, who goes for that? It was horrible at first, but we got, they, they paid off the, they paid the compensation for what went wrong. And then that went for the extra charges that we had to pay for keeping the bus drivers at a pay level. So anyway, Director Holmes.
I guess I'm going to echo what Director Basset was saying in terms of the importance of the work in front of us with SOD on the table, statutory operating debt for those who are paying attention and the decisions that are looming, that have already been alluded to. And if, if there are tentative plans about going out for referendum based on the work on what Vision's doing, I mean, the Vision team, I, I have no doubt they're doing valuable, appreciative or appreciated work. It is a small group. And I think what Director Basset said is everything, the buck stops here. And legally, we are responsible for that. So I'm really, really apprehensive that we've given them the notion that they have more decision-making authority than they do. And their input is invaluable, but again, it's a small piece. And so I really see that committee, if we could re-identify a purpose and how it's going to guide us through the next 12, 18 months as we right-size this district, as I've heard talked about over and over again, and doing work with FAC, which we still need to come back around and fix the bylaws there and our expectations. So I kind of, I, I, I'm not kind of, I am reiterating, I, I like that suggestion and how that lines out and works with FAC and that committee or, you know, as we process the vision work here later. I mean, because we're going to be looking at decisions in September, October, November. And so we've got some, I think a lot of details we need to get to that the board needs to process. And I think that committee could be regenerated and empowered to answer some good questions that the board needs to look at. Or, okay, and fine, if legally we can't repurpose it, then, you know, we give it a new drive. I, I, I don't know what it is. I'm, I'm just really focused in on the work that we have in front of us and. The buck stops here. I'm going to just end it there. So I think that's, I mean, what we're considering and enrollment closings, all of those that are coming up here as possibilities. I think that committee could do some really good work with that.
I'm going to agree with you about the buck stops here. But I'm going to disagree that it needs to be in the committee. It needs to be worked on by the whole board.
Oh, yeah, I'm saying.
I don't, I don't want, I don't want the committee to do it and then the board to redo it.
Okay.
I think you should do that all as, all that is a board job, not a little ad hoc.
With that being said then, are there going to be more substantial conversations than just our regular meetings? Because the volume of work is what I'm focused on. It's not going to fit, we've already reduced our schedule here. And now we've got huge information that's coming in August from the Vision team. And their agendas were pretty substantial. I mean, so I, I suspect we're going to. I mean, so I suspect we're gonna have a lot of information to process and digest. So that's where I was going.
An additional meeting or two. But I really want the entire board to weigh in on all of it and get the facts and not get the Reader's Digest version from a group of the three of us. I think that we need to have it be group work on that. And get rid of that committee. Get group work going on the visioning and all of that. And then anything related to facilities, when we rewrite the F A C bylaws, that was part of it. That's my thought.
Okay, well, here's my hand.
I see your hand.
Okay.
Would you like to speak?
Yes, please. I'll be so polite, most of that. You know, so what we were talking about was the Transportation and Infrastructure Committee. I heard a suggestion that we've done this work on transportation infrastructure, whether we keep the transportation word in there or not. Right, I'm certain it's all part of the infrastructure. The physical plants are mostly the infrastructure, but all of that's operational. So what I heard was the suggestion that we perhaps integrate that work into the Finance Advisory Committee. And of course, I'm serving on both. So I was supportive of that idea. I mean, I just spoke in support of that idea. And I talked about the fact that the way the old Transportation and Ad-Hoc Committee got just abandoned was trite. Now, going back there, but I'm saying going forward, I'm trying to move with the new deal. And so I believe that work in that Finance Advisory Committee and in the Infrastructure, whatever we call it, committee needs to crosswalk some of that heavy lifting work that's gonna come forward to the full board. There needs to be a crosswalk built that has not been built. That I can see. Updates about what the committee, where we are with some snapshot about what the committee heard about is not the same. It's crosswalking some of the heavy lifting that will need to be done between that committee and this board and our administration. It's a high volume of information. And I don't know about you, but I'm into a bunch of the reimagined stuff. I have no idea what they've been talking, you know, except when we get an update. But they might be, maybe not be asking or the information may not come forward. That would be questions that I would ask. And that's okay. But I'm just saying that the full board has not been engaged in any of it. So we've got a group of people who've been meeting and working. And I have no doubt, I fully believe that they've been working hard and getting a lot of information and data. But I'll tell you that when we came to, when it comes to right-sizeing the district and it's a school board's decision, the last thing I want to do is not be in league or have some understanding or have crosswalk some data in a substantive way with our community, whether it's through this merge committee we're talking about or a joint meeting with the Reimagine Committee or some sense of it. I do not want to get to September, October, whatever it is, and have four or five recommendations that we're looking at for the first time. And I think I spoke to this already, with this reduced meeting schedule. How this volume is getting, supposed to be getting done when we have fewer meetings, I'm all for fewer meetings. I mean, I, that's my impression. Maybe it's wrong. I don't need to debate it. If it's not inaccurate, okay. That's my impression, you know? But I just think there's a lot more to get done. And I see this may be a way that we can potentially, we look at the bylaws, check in with the F A C. And you and I are in the Training Infrastructure Committee. And so I'm okay with working together with them and we can talk about that later. Don't have to talk about it right now. But that committee, I think is important.
To clarify.
Mm-hmm.
I'm not in any way suggesting that the work from the Reimagine Group go to the Finance Committee rather than the board. I mean, that work comes to the board. When the board has financial likewiseions or something, it goes to F A C.
And I'm agreeing with that. I didn't suggest that anything other than.
Just wanted to be clear.
Yeah, but I did suggest that. I did, because what I did suggest is that if there's some crosswalking, we can define what crosswalking means. I suggested crosswalking some of the work that has to do with any recommendations or any data that we're getting about infrastructure in smaller chunks. If it's where it's appropriate, then it come to F A C. And the F A C should not be getting or receiving volumes of information that is not coming forward in a timely fashion to the full board. That's a process. And only through discussion can we arrive at what the, with the administration, quite frankly, can we arrive at a process that makes sense. We are at the threshold of August. And if we're talking about having some kind of decision by September, finding language and a process that works to crosswalk in some of the information, I think is important. Nobody has to agree with me, you know, but that's my view.
Okay, a committee can only have three people on it, on the board. I and you are on the Transportation. I step away, you are already on the F A C. And people just, we get, I don't think, do you want a motion?
What a motion if I want?
I move, I move with disband the Ad-Hoc Committee for Transportation. And. And I charge the F A C to be the one to consider items related to facilities.
I would say the motion.
Sorry. You were next. And I just, I made a commitment that I'm not gonna let factual inaccuracies go by and that, and I apologize that that belavers anything. But we are not having fewer meetings. We are meeting the exact, we are not having fewer meetings. We are meeting the exact same number of times we were meeting before.
It's just restructured.
It's just restructured. I just want to make that clear for the community and for everybody else. I just. So I just want to be clear about that.
Okay. Director Long.
I'm just wondering if we're moving something to the F A C, shouldn't we be including F A C in this discussion then?
Yeah. Has it been the members of the committee?
I guess the committee, I don't know.
Well, and I guess, so part of the reason we suspended F A C bylaws is because we couldn't get a quorum. So are we not having participation because if we're sending it to a committee that doesn't exist or it's just two people, then that's a bigger problem. So these are all tied together. And I think that's the importance or the crux of what I'm agreeing with you on is we need to have this. How information is flowing doesn't feel sufficient right now to be making decisions in September, October on school closings or a referendum or anything like that. I would not feel comfortable with that because nobody else is going on there except for the school board passing. And that's what we're seeing over and over again. These things are presented. So I just. The lift is so heavy right now and ultimately we have to sign off on it. So how are we going to mirror or match these different groups and entities? Because it's not just a presentation coming together. So I think instead of, I just, I don't want to, I want us to hear each other right now because these are gonna be huge decisions, not waiting on bait and bret's account or something. And I feel like that's what it's going. I'm just saying, if we are talking about closing schools, repurposing buildings, any of that, these, I would expect to have multiple conversations right now. I mean, very detailed, very out there. And so I just don't see how this is going to help if we disband this committee when, if there was something else that was started. And I, I mean, I'm gonna lay into the point about what is concerning for me is that price tag that you mentioned about the facilities study that went through. And I know we've already discussed that we're not paying unless we move forward. But through all of this work, we are going to be moving forward on something. So I just, I don't want to play semantics or let's kick it to a committee that doesn't exist. Those are my concerns right now.
Do you have clarification?
It exists. I don't know what the, because we suspended bylaws because of attendance issues and we haven't talked about that again. So I don't know if that's.
That's not really attendance issues. That's what I was gonna say.
I'm just, I, being the administrator that is responsible for the F A C, I am trying to land on what I'm hearing here. What I'm hearing here is, at least it's creating confusion for me because we have, we have the Vision Team. And the Vision Team is going to be coming forward with a recommendation to the school board. At which time the school board is going to take that recommendation and move forward all the things. However you choose to do that, as far as writing a statutory operating debt plan, as far as inclusive in that plan, what does that look like for our facilities, our buildings? What's shuttered, what's not, all of that? So I'm a little bit confused what even a facility committee would do because that process, even admittedly in this room, you guys have said that's our decision to make, we're gonna move forward. I'm confused by why you'd insert another committee. However, when I think of the Finance Advisory Council and I think of putting infrastructure in there, I'm thinking more along the lines of just true operational components. I'm thinking long-term facility maintenance. What does that look like? Kind of like what we talked about this spring. Like, do we bond? What does our levy look like? You know, what are our, what are our infrastructure needs? What are area, what are hotspots? What are areas we can do different? There's going to be, there's going to be a large amount of work coming out of any school closure decision, including probably a new boundary committee. There's gonna be more committees. I mean, it's not going to end. I'm trying to, I'm trying to reconcile adding the committee, which makes sense to me, but in a different capacity than what's being discussed right now. It's more of, how are we, not what is statutory operating debt? Sure, they might roll in, but it's going to be your plan and that plan's going to need to be done in the better part of six months. That committee, by the time we get them up to speed, isn't gonna be there to be able to necessarily help support you in that. But they will be able to support you from this point moving forward in annual decisions and think about, and here's a three to five year plan. That's to me a kind of a different, that's where my brain is.
Right, I was thinking more about facilities in that way, not the report that's coming from 2030. I wasn't thinking about that. I was thinking more your way. Do you want to clarify?
Oh, I should say that the attendance issue is more that, the difficulty of the bylaws is that it was very difficult to add or remove people from the committee. So what wound up being is that we couldn't get a quorum only because people were removed, weren't showing for a long time, years, who were still in the committee role, right, were still on the list. Even though we have good attendance from a good solid, what, five, six people, right? So that's the attendance issues. We do have a really good solid group of people attending. Yeah, so it's not that. It's just that we had someone who wasn't attending for two years. We had somebody who needed to be, who quit. But because of the way it's set up, it's only by a vote of the board can somebody be removed, right? So we had months of lag before they were removed. So it's more that and that's why the suspension of the bylaws. So I just want to explain that because we do have a great group. And could we use more? Probably a few more. I don't know. That's, I don't know, you don't want a committee to be too large either. But, but it is a good group and it can function really well. But, you know, it's also the question that we discussed before. They also have to get the information before the board, review the information and make their recommendations if we want them to function as a true financial advisory committee. If you want the board to have the information first, then there's no purpose to having a financial advisory committee. So that's just the facts. If they're getting it after, they feel, they've said that. What's the point? You know, our chair said, I'm a vice president of a bank. If I'm looking at this information already after it's already been presented to the board, why am I wasting my time here? So that's, that's the other piece of the suspension of the bylaws until we figured out what we wanted.
Director Holmes, Bassett, Long.
I think, I don't know when I raised my hand for any of that. Based on what you said just with the two groups, I'm leaning into the presentation that I reviewed on the Vision Team. And there's a slide on here with S O D and their components could support of the plan. That was alarming to me because of how important S O D is and the plan, the document that you had sent to all of us at one point I read. And I mean, that's gonna be detailed. So we're talking a lot of work. And so that's why I was linking the two because that group is not enough feedback for me to make a decision on what we should do with S O D. So I was leaning into that committee doing more in-depth work with the community as we're walking through these discussions. And we can, this Vision Team is one, or one component of it. But that committee and also I thought, and maybe I misunderstood, talked to community members who had expressed input in the infrastructure side and how partnerships could be formed and there was a lot more conversation. So maybe I'm just, no, I'm highlighting that that would have been, that is valuable input going forward.
Absolutely. I'm saying it's not gonna meet a timeline, is my point. It's like to get that committee up to speed and ahead of you by the time you need to do the work.
Well, and I guess maybe that's a good thing for me to know because the thing is, is you want to do the work of the board, but I don't see any indication that we're gonna have multiple conversations about this. And that's what's really alarming. When we're talking about S O D and potential school closings and repurposing, it should be already on our radar of how many times we're gonna be, you know. And we know that that deadline is in here for S O D, that it needs to go to M D E. I'm sorry for off-acknowledged. Statutory boundary that to Minnesota Department of Education by January 31st. So those are just all on my radar. I don't know if that cleared it up for you, what I was functioning. We just need a lot more conversation with our community because I feel like we're in an echo chamber right now. And we've identified, you know, major financial issues and there are limited decisions. And if we're gonna, this timeline's really tight.
Okay, before calling Director Bassett, did you want to clarify something?
Yeah, you know, I wish we had the presentation first with this conversation because I think that would have clarified some things. You know, I just wanted to make sure that the community has confidence in the plan that we set out months ago in the 17,000 different pieces or different people that are part of it, in the work of the Vision Team. And we haven't changed courses. From the beginning, we've said this community team is, and this is like most other districts that I know of, when you have a huge project like this, there's a community task force that works on understanding and digging in and learning a whole lot to come back with some vision, high-level recommendations for the board and the board will wrap it with. And that's what we've said from the beginning, that nothing has changed and we have a plan moving forward. It's gonna be a tight timeline. You're right. And what I said last week was that we'll have, we know right now, we're gonna need, we're prepared tonight to share with you. Again, I wish we'd had the presentation before this conversation. We're gonna need extra study sessions in October, November and December in order to get to the place where you feel comfortable with the information that's come forward, additional information that you're gonna need, additional information or vetting of the community if that's something the board wants. And I'm guessing you will, in order for you to have what you want, to be really confident. So, so part of this is I want the community to know that we have a really solid plan that hasn't changed from the beginning. We've had a community group that we've set is gonna be doing this work. And as the recommendations come, we've said to the board that now it's your work. As you look at the recommendations and the vision of what's come forward, that's your work. I have huge concerns with bringing another committee into this at this point. My picture from the beginning, and a lot of it's mostly because of what I've heard from you, is this has to be work of the board. Once those recommendations come to y'all, it absolutely has to be. I would say coming forward, as Kristen said and a few others have said, I think that once you have, boards made decisions and we have plans, whether it is long-term facility maintenance stuff or bond and some of the work around that, I think the place for the financials of this to come back could be at F A C. I think that makes sense. The work of building the plan and what happens and the decisions y'all are gonna have to make, I think we have to stay, I think, I'm highly suggesting that is not a committee work. That is the board as a whole work and that's what we've been planning for.
Director Bassett.
Well, Director Houhaisel, thank you for the comments and.
Well, Director Houhaisel, thank you for the comments and just made about that. And actually, even some of the, I mean, even this clarification about FAC. We actually were talking about the transportation and infrastructure committee. All of this conversation went to FAC. In terms of the infrastructure and transportation committee, I was trying to think about a way forward for information to flow. And so as I, I don't know how many more meetings are set for this reimagined group. I would suggest that we invite board members to attend those and observe and listen. Because, you know, and because in the model of Lino, where it was all together, the community and the board members were all together. So when they weren't separate, off someplace in the corner, everybody's working together. So I think for board directors to begin to come up to speed and be invited to those meetings, I think is important. Do I, am I advocating dismantling that committee? No. Do I necessarily want to see another committee established? No. Did I advocate for us going to FAC first? Because it's their bylaws to see if they're willing to kind of accept, that's the first thing I said, to accept some additional responsibility for infrastructure. I think that'd be an appropriate move to talk to that committee first to see what they think about it. So they know they have a little bit of a bigger piece of infrastructure, however that happens. I think that that's a good, a good thing for us to do and to try to follow that in. And it's only under those circumstances would I be favorable of having the infrastructure committee go away because I think it's a lot of work. And I think there was work to do when it got dismantled, quite frankly, you know. And so, but I'm not gonna belabor that. But I think going forward, I'm trying to figure out a way forward. If the way forward is for board directors to be given the calendar and the schedule when the people are meeting, fine, for the reimagined committee because I'm fine to go to a meeting and listen and take notes and then come back and ask our superintendent for any questions or any of those things or any of the cabinet for questions that I have. Not to interfere with that process, that's not my agenda. Just interfere with the process where we have community people and giving input, that's not it. However, they may not ask the questions that are important to me. And I want to make sure my question's gonna answer if I have to cast a vote. And so I think that that's fair. The board is the community, the community is the board. We're in unison together. We represent them. There's no way the school board should be anathema to being involved or understanding now. You know, I mean, any director who don't want to go, don't have to go. You know, but I think that that is something that should be available to board directors because I feel like we need to start coming up to speed with what some of the issues are. And I think I've heard, and I know I've said, that some of these updates are not doing it for me, you know. And so, and I'm not, don't, you know, I mean, I, because I've had more hands-on in the past. So I'm acknowledging that my own stuff, you know, but that's something I would do. But I don't, I shouldn't be surreptitious. I shouldn't sneak into a meeting or we're talking to the community about what's happening with the future of this district. That's crazy, you know. So I'm not talking about that secretly. I'm saying I think board members need to be invited to come to, to know what the schedule is. And if they want to go, go. If you don't want to go, don't go. And if our role is observation because we don't want to, not to disrupt, I'll put it like that. Because my agenda is not to disrupt what people have been doing. But my agenda is to make sure I'm ready when it's time to vote. And then I understand what's going on. And so that's what I would say. And that, under those circumstances, if once we talk to them and to our finance advisory committee, see how they're feeling about if they want to have a little bit bigger role, I don't know what that looks like or means right now. But if we get more input from them around infrastructure, fine. But I think that comes first before we say we're gonna dismantle infrastructure because it's hard enough to get information right now. People can disagree with that, that's my statement. If other people don't feel that way, that's okay with me. I don't need to debate it, I get to feel how I feel. Just like I do.
Director Long?
Okay, so there were two things that came up within the time that I raised my hand for what I want to say. So I'm gonna start with those first. I think it's a great idea, Director Bassett, that we be invited to observe what's going on during the reimagined things. I'd love to see that and attend that, attend those. The other thing is the transportation and infrastructure committee. That committee was happening way before reimagined, so, I mean, I just...
I mean, it hasn't done anything for nine months, we just need to...
But, so, the thing that I was raising my hand about though was, looking at the time, it is 9:30, a little bit over 9:30. Kind of wondering if maybe we want to continue this conversation about board committee's next meeting so that we can go on with some of the other stuff in our agenda or what we want to do with that because of where the time is, and we also have a closed session too, right?
I think you're right.
So, I mean, I, I just am putting up some suggestions, but with where the time's at.
Okay. Yes?
I think that since it was brought up, that do we ask the FAC committee if they want to do whatever? I also think that the reimagined committee should be consulted on their feelings on having board members to attend. If that's the route that people want to go, I want to know what the reimagined committee has to feel about that. I want to know what sort of guardrails are gonna be put into place to let it only be an observing position. I mean, there's huge ramifications with community members that may not want board members there. So that would be, that's the only other thing that would be...
I would agree. I think that board members should not attend, I think we get updates, but... Maybe, but I don't think our presence would be helpful. I think that we could intimidate people, I think that we could... It's like when you go to observe, you automatically change the dynamic in the world. And I, it is a big fear of mine that that would happen. Could you hand up?
Yeah, and also just to add to that, I think at this stage of the game, there will be a lot of holes in our thinking if we are joining them to just listen to what they have or what they are discussing right now. Because they've, they've been, they've had a lot of meetings. And I know that the decisions that, or the proposals that they are going to bring to us, hopefully are not just five or six proposals, right? So if you, you go to listen to them, let's say the next four meetings, you've lost your last 15 meetings, right? So your thinking process may be different, at least that's how I will look at it. And also the intimidation factor will be real, right? Just having a board member present, some people may or may not speak up at all. So I would like to suggest that as much as the information gathering is necessary for us to trust that the work they have put in is good work. And if we don't think it's good work, the final decision will be for us to make.
Okay. Keeping in mind what Director Long said, perhaps, you were not here, but she said it's already after 9:30, a lot more things. Perhaps the rest of this discussion should just be at the next work session, our future work session. Can you interject?
I did, I just wanted, so I looked online because all of this information is posted. They have two meetings left, July 29th, developing rightsizing recommendations by analyzing enrollment, facilities and geography. And then August 13th is finalizing recommendations for the board. And then September 23rd is presenting to the board. So that's kind of the timeline that is a little crunchy for me. And I think, you know, it's not about intimidation, it's about accountability for our vote and what we have to do. And it's listening to the community member. I can commit to sitting in a room and listening. I, I'm not gonna comment on anything that anybody's saying. And that's my job is to listen to good and bad. And I think, again, I'm gonna just emphasize the importance we're putting on this group, which is, I think, forty-five or six, I don't know if everybody always attended. I can't remember where it landed. But that, that is a, that is a small, small number. And so, again, valuable work. But if we're using this to lean in to help make our decisions, and it is listed here and on SOD, I want to be listening. And those are, those are public meetings, so I don't, I don't...
I just, I have to step in.
Yeah.
Never in my career have we been working a process for six months. And as we get to the end of it, rules are changing. I, I just, I don't feel at all supported in the work that our team with this community, with a whole slew of other data. And to change it at this part, because that was part of the community's, the vision team's concern from the beginning, is, is the board even going to trust and listen to this? And that's ultimately what you're gonna do. Their, their recommendations are going to be gained at the vision of the district, right? What they believe this, this district should be. The specifics of that are gonna be in your hands. And that's on us to make sure that you get the information that you need to make the decisions. But to change the process right now, talk about a way to lose trust in the community? I, I just, I really have to push back on that. I think it's an incredibly unfair thing to put into this process at this point.
And even if a board member says nothing, their presence changes what people are thinking. They, we cannot...
Let it work, let the process work.
Director Bassett?
Well, I just will say this. I don't think that I'm, I may have along this discussion talked about merger or adding or I do think crosswalking is important. None of those comments went to trying to change the structure of what the existing reimagined group has done. My comments all went to trying to find a way that we could maybe fast-track, strengthen the flow of information about kind of where we are in terms of decision-making with the volume of data. So that is still my interest. And I will say that those, so I didn't talk about changing the structure. So superintendent, as you've mentioned, this is late in the game, do we change in the structure? Doing something more formal might give that appearance, and that's not what I want to do. I don't want to derail what they've been doing, I'm not interested in that. What I am interested in is feeling for myself that I have a handle on kind of where folks are at, what the conversation is and where the things are going. The meetings are public. We are elected public officials for this district. I'm saying what I'm saying because I don't want to be perceived as sneaking into a meeting or being obstructive to a meeting or any of those things to a meeting. That's not been my history, and I don't intend to do it now. But if I decide to go to a meeting, it's because I need it for myself. Other directors who decide they don't want to do that, that's okay with me. I'm not gonna belittle them, I'm not gonna assign motives to them. That's not what I do. Don't go if you don't feel like you need to. It's not gonna make me, I mean, whatever you do, I just know that it's gonna help me perform my decisions. And if there's only a couple more meetings left, they've gotten through the entire process without having any of that. And so I'm interested, now I may not even make it to the meetings because I have other stuff to do. I don't sit around and figure out what I'm gonna, how I'm gonna do anything to anybody. That is not what I do. That's how I keep my peace. I try to speak here when I'm at the meeting about what I believe. I try to follow through on those things. If I happen to go to a meeting, it's be, be because of things I've said here tonight because I feel like I need more information or I feel like I've been apart from the process and it's hard for me to make a decision at the end of the whole process when I've not been engaged. There's nothing wrong with that statement, it's just a statement of my own personal fact. You know, so anybody who don't want to go, don't go. You know.
I still don't think board members should be there. I understand board members feeling needing for information. Do they ever record those?
No, no.
Because that would also intimidate.
That would be disturbing.
That would intimidate, okay, never mind. All right, Director Bowman?
We agreed as a board...
Sorry, I've had my hand up for a while even before Bassett.
And I didn't agree with you, I said what I said tonight, I said...
You'll have to go long and then Bowman?
Great.
Okay, so I guess I'm just feeling micromanaged barriers and lack of trust for some board members and how I'm hearing this conversation go. But more importantly, I'm just wondering about, we had talked about at previous work sessions, there being a place where we, as board members, as board members could go where we could get access to the materials and information that was shared. And so I'm just wondering where that is in the process of being put together so that, you know, we can go there and look at what has been shared so that it's not a huge mountain that we're climbing when we get there.
Yep, it's, and again, I wish that we'd been able to have the presentation before this. Everything's online. All the agendas and all the presentations are online.
And what about the notes from the meetings so that we can?
I don't know what notes mean. We, there's processes that we've gone through to narrow down some things, but I don't think there's been a, a record keeping of notes per se. I don't know what that would, would be.
Well, is there any way we could get the information of what was like narrowed down on? Or what, what maybe our lens of focus should be after looking at everything?
Yeah, what we have online right now is, I don't know what I would recreate to do that right now. What we have online right now is every agenda and every presentation. And we brought to the board the facility assessments and the Hazel Reinhardt, the demographic as well. So those two big reports did come to y'all.
Yeah, because I kind of feel like, you know, before the reimagined started, there probably should have been that discussion with the board around components or requirements or criteria or whatever it is you might want to put a label on it, rubrics. Because I feel like that's kind of where we're getting to right now, where it, it just feels like infinite and nothing's really, and yeah, the, the information really isn't getting to us the way it needs to be, especially if we're supposed to be the ones making the decisions. And, you know, I would just like to say, you know, I've brought this up before, my style of learning is not the same as every other board member's in here. And so sometimes I do need a little bit more information than other board members might need to feel comfortable in the decisions that I make. And that's why I ask extra questions. It's not about me trying to play a gotcha game or surprise game. It's about me trying to truly understand. Like even today, when we went through the whole process of, can we put the titles there? And then Molly gave some information, and then you gave me some information. And then I was like, okay, this is starting to click in my head about what this is. So, yeah, I'm just kind of feeling like, for me, it is gonna be really rushed and it's gonna be kind of hard because there was an opportunity to get information along the way and I, I, I did it. And now I'm gonna be way behind when it comes time to, to board on things. So I'm just kind of expressing that for, also for future considerations, you know.
And I want the board to know that our team will spend whatever hours we may need and you need because we recognize the lift and what's gonna be on your shoulders. And again, the, the timeline of the process hasn't changed at all. Nothing has changed from the beginning. And what changed because Director Long made that suggestion is we said, yeah, let's just get it all for the whole public to see, let's put everything online. And so what I would ask at this point is that we let the process continue to work. We make sure that we find dates, anticipating that there's gonna be additional needs and dates. And we even looked at a calendar to suggest some of those through this call because we know there's gonna be a lot of information and we will spend whatever time it takes to make sure that we both honor the process that we put in place and you have what you need to make some really difficult decisions.
To clarify, if you go online, they have, to the Vision 2030 team website, they have every meeting and they have every PowerPoint, they have everything. So for information that the team got, it's on, it's, there's every date. So for information that the team got, it's on, it's, there's every date, a whole, from welcoming to reflections, it's all. And Director Bowman, I have you up next. Oh, yeah, you just go to the Vision 2030 Team.
Okay.
And.
On the district website.
On the district website.
It's on the landing page, and then it's all under meetings.
And just keep clicking.
It's all under meetings. There's like four tabs at the bottom. One is the purpose, one is the vision team membership, one is the process to determine, and then under the meetings. And we've always had all of the dates of the meetings listed with the, what was at was all of the agendas and all the presentations. And we crosswalked it with those presentations that also came publicly to the board.
And it's all, I mean, it's got every date. It's got, you just can, it's got a little plus. You click on it and the whole thing comes down and you can see every meeting. So I just want to say, don't go. I'm sorry, I was going to add on this. Actually, you're not. I have Bowman. I bumped Bowman, and then it's Bassett. I'm sorry. You're going to do it. Okay, fine. Bowman.
Thank you. I just want to go back to the, the whole notion of breaking the rules that we agreed to. The board members would stay away from the reimagine meetings. I myself, if we need to, let's go back to those meetings and workshops that we had that were tape recorded that showed our agreement. Because if we do not continue to abide to, to the agreement, and I remember the discussion so clearly. If we do not agree to the things that, if we cannot abide by the things that we agreed to, then we become the rule breakers. And that, that will mean that this community will never again trust us or the processes and the procedures that we ask them to volunteer to work on. That's my cautionary note, and I'm here. My big concern is to be an open violator of the rules. I find to be disrespectful and disturbing.
Thank you. Director Paul. So this isn't about rule breaking, and I'm not trying to change the structure either. I've actually expressed questions about this process from its inception. And, you know, what was the end goal? I think we talked early on about attending. It wasn't agreed upon. We never voted on anything. We never discussed it, but we talked. I remember the conversation about talking and stuff and privacy. But it's, it's, you guys, it's, it's a small group. It's 46 individuals. It's been tasked with huge, huge elements that are in our wheelhouse. Analyzing enrollment facilities and geography, those are all things that we have talked about as a board. And so to want to know as it's formulated, again, not a bad thing. This is just obtaining more information so we can have educated votes. And, you know, I think how the process went about, or pretending that we all agreed and didn't have concerns about it, but that's not how this went down. It, it, you know, we had conversations around, are we going to be able to see all the survey responses? How are those touch points ensured that they're individual touch points and not multiple people, you know, filling out the survey, that the validity of the work? And that's okay to question that. So again, it's not changing the structure. It's, I, I like how you just summarized that, Director Long, in terms of how you process and how you learn and how you'll get to the vote. I need lots of information because Superintendent Salvo, if you're going to say you've never been in a process where you've done six months of work, I've never been on a board that is going to have to close schools and walk around and look at people and say, yeah, I voted for that. Because I know that's the reality of our situation. I know that. We've known that for a long time. And I'm not afraid to make the vote, but I want to make sure I have the information to do it and I can stand by it. So it's not coming down on these community members. Again, that is a small, small group. We also have a board director who was at some of the meetings to begin with before he came on as a board director. So let's not create problems that aren't there. This is a good thing. If we have board members who are going and wanting to hear what people are saying, that's not intimidation. That's, that's, that's responsibility and accountability for our role as a board director. And again, you know, the hands are going up. I'm just speaking my truth. And I, I live in this community. I'm around in this community.
Sorry, Kim, my, my hand was up for a few more years. So sorry.
It doesn't matter. Nobody's really listening to one another. I guess that's, because we have data. We have so much data. We have so much data, and all needs to come into play. And you all should have access to the data, the survey data that we gathered when we were looking for the superintendent, because they had input about where the district should go. Don't ask me how it got lumped in there, but it did. I, I think it was areas of focus. And then when we went through the cuts last year, we had over a thousand residents and students and staff that gave us direction for the district too. So all of those are components and not just this one group. And again, it's just parts of my puzzle that I need so I can stand by my boat and say, you know, we weighed all of this information, and we're not weighing one group more than the other. It's where are the themes? And I think the themes are there for rightsizing and closing schools. But how we get there specifically, I still have a long way to go. And I think the community is going to have a lot of say and feedback for us. So again, it's just information. It's, it's knowing the volume of work that I have in front of me. And we, I think I said earlier, we all have lives, so we're all going to have to fit this into our lives somehow about how we're going to process all of this.
We are super off track from the committee discussion.
I'm not off track at all.
We're not discussing about the committees?
No, about the last, that was not the committee knowledge.
Yeah, we were off track for a long time, so it's not him that's off track. Well, that's the way you're making her feel.
2030 Committee.
Yeah, right. We got, we got.
And I'm not trying to restructure or reshape or break the rules. I'm addressing that sentence that was.
I understand. I understand that.
Because I need information.
Shifted. Okay. It's not your, it's not your shift. We just got shifted. Thank you.
Mine was just really quick. The teams need to be updated because there's still a school board member on the team.
Here it is.
Does that list need to change?
Okay. But I was, I was on the board.
He hasn't been there.
Okay. Director Bassett, Director Ruto, Director Long, and then go ahead. Then I'm not going to call on anybody else on this topic. We're going to move on. Okay, unless, unless you're willing not to speak, you may.
Well, no, it's my turn. It's my turn. Excuse me. I'm next here. Oh, excuse me. I didn't mean to be pejorative. But anyway. I, um, we did not all agree that the board should not be involved, that the board should not be on committees. And I think that that's important to say because it was just stated that rule breaking and all of this kind of stuff, like we all have this agreement. We didn't. I know for myself, I just stood down and allowed the superintendent's leadership to move forward. But I, I said then, when we talked about it, I wasn't okay with it. It was a point to what I have been involved in in 20 years I've known this district, just like the superintendent talks about 30 years of experience. I might have lied too. It might have been different. That's all I said. And I said at that time, I thought the board should be involved. And every generation where we had either strategic planning or any other kind of thing, and certainly school closure, we've had plenty of input from community because the board has been front and center. So I have stood down and stood back on all of this, and I have not interfered in any of it. So for me to say now that it would be helpful for me to go and observe, I do not like to have that characterized as rule breaking because it's not. It's been pointed out that we didn't take a vote on this. We did not. And so I think, I know I'm trying to be, and I perceive that other directors have tried to be supportive of this movement that is, as it's been envisioned by our superintendent. Nothing that I've said tonight is counter to that. All I've said is, in addition to the process that's already ongoing, none of which I've ever tried to stop or interfered with. Because I said right from the beginning, I felt the board should be involved, and I'm seeing it right now. And I'm not even saying the same thing now. I just said, if anybody wants to go, don't go. If anybody wants to observe, we're elected officials and we can go. That's, I'm standing by that. And I also said, I don't even know if I can make any of the meetings because I'm busy. But I don't want it to be, you know, if I have to sneak around and come to a meeting and there's something wrong with it, no. I have a different opinion than a couple of directors here, but there's seven of us.
Yeah, I, I wanted to just say that it was mentioned that I, I was on the committee to start, and I was, I attended three meetings, I believe, before I got appointed to the board. I remember very vividly that during our first two meetings, more than, more than majority of people that were at those meetings had concerns about, are we sure that the school board will welcome the information or recommendations? If not, this is a waste of time. And secondly, they also were very appreciative that our presence wasn't there. Right? School board presence wasn't there because they felt free to be able to have dialogues and talk through difficult things without feeling like they will be victimized or community members will hear about those things outside. So being that I was there, I, and now I am here, I do want to play with us to say that they have two meetings left. If we don't have the information we need, we have the avenues to ask those questions. Those two meetings, I don't see how we are going to change, at least, much of our thinking process. Let's not devalue the 40-plus people that have put in the work over the last few months so that each of us can make those decisions for them. The decisions will ultimately be for us, the seven of us to make when the time comes. But for now, please give them the chance to finish what they've started. It's two meetings, and I think we can just let it go. Please.
I would totally agree. Director Long.
I said what I needed to say.
Thank you. All right, we're moving on. I'm going to take the meal break talk up, and we'll work that in somewhere during professional development.
Dr. Stella, operational performance oversight and organizational direction.
We have a lot to do yet, and I'm happy to share that. I also know we've got, I also know we've got a closed session to get through, but I'm happy to whip through this, and I hope it clarifies some of what y'all said. So.
I think it's going to be an important question here.
Thank you. Can we go ahead? We haven't had the land acknowledgement yet. So we acknowledge Robinsons Area Schools located on the homeland of the Dakota and Indicoy people. We acknowledge the history of genocide and forced assimilation of the indigenous inhabitants of this land. We honor and respect many indigenous peoples who live on and hold sacred these lands, and we stand with members of these nations to fight injustice in all its forms. We uphold the preservation of Dakota and Indigenous languages, land-based education, and tribal sovereignty. We know the mission has been central to the work that the, to the vision team has been doing and have really, they have worked to keep, to keep students at the center of decision-making through everything that they've done as we co-create with our community future of Robinsons Area Schools. So for you to know, and again, I think it's important for you to hear, we are, we're on track. We're on the exact timeline that we established and sort of established in December. We launched reimagine Arville to help us engage our community in ways that they never have been. And a really powerful question, what could students look like if we know, we know about how students learn and we were able to remove some of the barriers? What's the district our kids want being reserved? We've had more than 17,000 individual engagements to point. Students, staff, families, community members stepping forward to help shape these recommendations. I think this level of participation, which is amazing, kudos, not just to the 46 members of the team, but to the community at large, just shows how best our community is in the district. The vision team has looked at things along data and the research and is using it to shape, as we look at the vision, what it brings then ultimately to you. So moving forward, you know this, that the design, the team was designed to intentionally reflect the diversity and values of the community, and you've seen that data before, the makeup of the community. The four areas that Guy with the vision team is doing is that academic programming, the academics, teaching and learning, and the lived experience of students. The second part is the outcomes and measurements, which are really aligning to the portrait of a graduate. We talked about that when we did the study session here, where you engaged in the same questions that we have asked the community, specific to the portrait, the profile of a graduate work. That'll ultimately help, input from that will also help with some of the scorecard and outcome work that comes to you as well. The third piece is the involvement assumptions. Again, you've seen the report. You've studied the report. The team has as well. And that's been part of what the conversations have been as we've looked at. Then that fourth part, which is the facilities and taking a look at that comprehensive facility assessment and really exploring different facility scenarios as we move forward and think about the kind of learning experience that we want for our kids. So all of this is interconnected, and every recommendation that comes forward is, these four areas are all a part of that, rooted in what's best for kids, aligned to our finances, and shaped ultimately by our community. So just some recent work in June, the vision team took a field trip. They visited six different schools to explore firsthand how some of the buildings were being used in ways that align to the research and the data that they had been looking at as we look to really reimagine learning spaces. These experiences have sparked some amazing conversations with physical space and limits to student learning, and it also helped frame conversations about thinking about rightsizing our district. If we're looking at learning spaces differently, if we're monitoring, sure, there's flex spaces in every building that's different than classrooms that have desks and 30 kids. In July, shifted the focus to what's happening inside those buildings. July 10th, we kind of closed out some of the work that we've been doing on the activity or the academics. And some of that work has been handed over to some of our experts in teaching and learning now as we take what the, the vision team has given us and try to help craft some language, bring it back to them as we bring it to you. So that's kind of what July has looked like. And then as we look to, whoops, sorry. And then, as you know, the district must submit a standard operating debt, the SOD plan, to MVE by January 31, 2016. And as we said earlier, this isn't separate or competing processes. In fact, the vision team's recommendation feed it to that plan. And again, their recommendations come to you. You are the decision makers in this, and that's been very clear to the team from the beginning. The team's work, whether it's enrollment assumptions, programming, and facilities, helps make, helps us make the best possible decisions that are both educationally sound and financially reasonable. So again, as I said, this has been a very integrated process. This is where you come in on this next piece. Critical phase of the work. Totally understand where you're at in this. But the, the, the on-time deliverable, which we shared with you as they're coming forward, recommendations at our study session in September. And then from there, you enter a really tight and important 12-week window for decision-making. And like I said, we will schedule as much time as you need so that you feel confident and hopefully unified in decisions-making moving forward. That take a look at school consolidations or closures, programming, staffing impacts, and boundary adjustments, all of which we really do need finalized end of December into January so we can submit the SOD plan January 31st. So you can see, we are exactly where. So you can see, um, we are exactly where we've said all along that we were going to be. We haven't changed anything from this visual. We'll be coming forward to you in September, the team will be coming forward to you and then we'll work with you and we need to start looking at some of those dates now to for sure add study sessions in here. That's kind of what we had planned to do. So looking at, you know, we're looking actually at Mondays and as we look at Mondays, there's, you know, a few of that again, we can work with the chair and I can work. We'll get some of those dates to you in advance to make sure it works with all of you. Or if there are other nights that work, we can do that. But I think that's part of what we want to do right now is do some scheduling to make sure that we've got time allocated. If we don't need it for some reason, uh, we don't have to do it. But, uh, if we do, we'll make sure that we have that time. Share with you the website information, so take a look at that and, and see what, um, what that might connect with you. And then we also had those, the question about the, um, the budget. So we shared that information, um, with you earlier. I just want to point out on the budget, um, you know, when you look at the scope of what this has entailed, we didn't hire an outside consultant in, in twenty-twenty-two when the board engaged in a strategic planning process. And, um, I would know this has been far more robust than any strategic planning process I've ever been a part of or done. Just for the consultants, and I looked this up today, just for the consultants, it was ninety-nine thousand five hundred dollars for the strategic home consultant. We have not paid anything for an outside consultant of this process. We designed it. I've asked a team who already has beyond full-time jobs to add this to their plates. Four of them are sitting here right now, along with, um, Derek, our communications. Beth Temper's been a part of the planning team. Alyssa Pure, as you know, um, Amy O'Hern has, um, Joanna Rooney and Molly have done amazing support. So the, the, the work that's gone into this in order to ensure that, that the team has a process that's filled with integrity, um, has been beyond one of the most amazing things I've ever heard of. So I couldn't be more proud of our team, I couldn't be more proud of their community. I understand the faith that any board that's going through a process that aren't sitting on the table. And like I said, you know, Director Bassett, you and I have different experiences. I've never been part of a strategic planning process or a facilities process like this or boundary changes where board members are sat at the table. It's always been through a community to the board and then the board ultimately to continue to take recommendations, um, and can make them what you can live with. And that's on us to make sure you got the information that you need. So hopefully some of the information that's on the website now, um, per your request, uh, will help connect some of those dots and then we'll see how the next two months go between now and then. If there's other things that might be useful to you, um, as we look at those recommendations, let us know.
Thank you. The whole financial part, knowing that it was ninety-nine thousand for that one, two years, three years ago and what we're spending now for this quality work, amazing.
Yeah, but I think we're about twenty-five thousand dollars, so five thousand.
So twenty-five percent.
Yeah, so and, and seventeen thousand people have been engaged. Um, community education helped us with, uh, the, uh, food for all of the community engagement meetings, which was amazing. The flyer, um, you know, was, was the biggest expense to date. It was a cost, both, um, postage of it and then printing and all that was about twelve thousand dollars. That was the only way we knew how to make sure every single member of this school district and community was aware and was invited to participate. So there was a price tag for that and, you know, by looking at the numbers of people who took the survey or come to the pop-ins or were at the community engagement meetings, um, I would say it paid off. And then the general fund has covered the rest of the supplies, the food for the meetings, um, and some of the materials. So thank you.
Thank you. Can you, I know I'm just not recalling, we've talked about, what do those engagement touch points? The seventeen thousand, what was included in those?
Yeah, so the community survey, there were about five thousand people that took the survey. And there was a different survey for students, for staff and for families.
I'm sorry, and that five thousand included all of those?
Yep. Okay. And then, and I don't, I don't have the breakdown, I can get it for you. I think we had almost a thousand people and I, I, I'm cautious right now of, um, of saying the numbers. But, um, the pop-ins, it was a, it was a pretty significant number and I'm not sure that it was exactly a thousand. Again, engagement, so, so, so we had a community survey. We had all of the community engagement meetings where we had the three questions and that's what we took you guys through, those same three questions. So that was every staff, we met with every staff in every building. Um, we met with, uh, eight community meetings in person and two virtual, I think. And then we also asked students, we had groups of students, those same questions. Additionally, I met with every secondary class, grade level, sixth grade through twelfth grade. So there are those numbers. We had also a mentee, another smaller survey that they taught, they used during that as we got a conversation. So all of the secondary students had an opportunity to participate. With the elementary, we had the booklets and got some data from them around that. And then the piece that we'll be doing yet in August is some teacher focus rooms. So that was seventeen thousand and actually Alyssa did the actual data points and it was a hundred and fifty-eight thousand different data points.
So the students, when you would go and meet with them, they all were surveyed or they would speak? How did that work? How was that?
Yep, so the three level meetings where we, I mean, an auditorium, there was a mentee with like seven survey questions. They would complete the survey on their phones or on their phone books and then we'd do a, a large group discussion. So kids would share some of their input with that. So we have that data from their survey, um, primarily from, from those, yeah.
Okay, so they're, they're, if they were in attendance, they're counted or you have data from them?
We have how many, right, we have how many surveys, um, they, they count, yeah.
And one last thing, is that synthesized into themes that's going to?
So, yep, that's what we've been doing on our own right now and we're also knowing that the bulk of that data is so important as we report it back to the community that we're looking at some expertise around that. Again, due to cuts, we lost some internal staff. So, um, it will be yes. Some of the questions we're using right now with the themes, um, we got a grant, we got support with the profile question. So we've got a organization that's helping us with that data right now.
Thank you. Thank you. That's a lot. That's amazing.
Yeah, I mean, if we really talk about co-creating with our community, I, this community showed up. And, and like I said, I, I know it's going to be on your shoulders and that's on us to make sure that you have what you need, um, to make the, the decisions once you see the recommendations. And then we have to figure out those next steps after that with workshop being with you.
That's the time to. Okay, this one is a quick one.
Is there a place on the website that talks about the cost of different things?
No, there was an email today, two emails today.
With what item cost or? I think we said what the overall cost was for the community. I think that's the email Kristen sent has the contributions of community. It had the food, it has what the district's paid for food, for, um, materials and printing. And then it has the postage and the amount for the survey. And two different emails that came from Kristen to the board today. Here, so if we want more details on there, we'll just email to you. What, what else would you need?
Was there transportation involved?
Uh, we don't have that though yet. There was for the, the, there was for the field trip, yes.
Legal fees? Legal fees or consulting fees, anything?
Yeah, I, was Hazel stuff in there or I don't know, demographics side. So I, I'm not trying to recall a sheet, I'm not, I don't recall seeing anything legal or, yes.
I think that's why we're, if we come up with other questions, email, yeah, because it's.
Because that, it was, it was, it was food, publications, internal publications, um, supplies. That was, that was the bulk of what I can think of. And then Derek came, hence the second email came and said, hey, this got charged to my department. But this was the postcard or whatever went on during the survey. I just, I believe that the demographer is something we pay for every year anyway, right? That's not.
Not annually.
Not every year, but every, every, so many years.
Yeah, every year.
The district has a demographer.
It's not, it's, we would have needed that no matter what. Exactly, that was not. Right, that was, we just had one the year before.
Yeah.
So that's why that was kind of a redundancy. That did not count. Yeah, we had had somebody come in the year before, um, two guys and they had these colorful graphs that they had for us. Okay. Excel spreadsheets that were interactive.
Okay. Moving on, this next one is a quick one. Designation, designated designation of the Iowa, the Iowa thing. Uh, it's the identified official with authority for the MDE, external user access. Dr. Stallow is one and at the next meeting, we're going to be voting for Dr. Stallow to be the.
He'll be the proxy. I am, I am not, I am the Iowa, just like me, he's my proxy. Um, and that's to support, uh, efficiency of operations when I'm not available to grant designation. Can, do we need to take action? Well, it'll.
We have to turn to the next.
Next meeting, we just wanted to be sure, but you knew that it was coming forward. Can we get some information, especially for people watching, why, what this is, why MVE? Um, I think in the board packet, there is, uh, there's a whole sheet that talks about why, why MVE and Helsby require it to make sure. I mean, it's really about data privacy and making sure that we've got, um, the Iowa authorizes the right, the right access to, um, some of the secure systems that we have. For with the Department of Education. Yeah. Sure, people are listening.
Yeah, 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 thanks, appreciate that.
Okay. Moving on, thank you. The district professional development process, okay, starts tomorrow night, six o'clock here. And there is food tomorrow night at six o'clock.
At three.
At five, the food, right, but the food starts at five-thirty, so the meeting can start right away at six o'clock. And it, um, this part of it is, was that the suggestion of Dr. Wong to follow, to follow up on, um, the two people that met with us talking about the interrelationship of the school board and the students and the teachers and the learning and anyway, so that would be great. The next morning, we start at nine, but please come earlier because I'm going to be cooking you pancakes and I had blueberries yesterday to go with the pancakes and so.
Let any of the Hopkins students know about that.
Well, I was thinking, Ash, but, um, you don't know this, but I'm fairly famous for pancakes. Would you say that?
Yes.
Okay. And so I am making you guys pancakes Wednesday morning, so come earlier because we need to still start our meeting at nine and it's Dr. David Webb and he is going, he's the person with the decision-making process where you get the information and you get reactions and you have, um, options and you make a decision and anyway. And when it comes to lunch, then we'll be picking our options. No, you ordered it? No, we're good. Okay, so be there or be square, don't be square, just be there, okay? All right, moving on. Superintendent Relations, the annual review of superintendent and board communication. Okay, this is a document that is not unfamiliar to us. It is. Who to contact and when? We have it in our packets, right? Yep. Somebody have any questions, any concerns about that? The one thing that I questioned when we were meeting was about always contact the superintendent since that superintendent is the only one of the staff that as board members can be contacted. So I said, well, what if my computer's having problems? And the answer is we still go through the superintendent. We can copy like Joel on it, but it always needs to go to the superintendent and then the superintendent follows through with Joel, just, yes, please take care of this with the superintendent. But always, always the superintendent is in the loop. And if you want anything done, it always is through the superintendent. And then also by email, I'm the official responder. It's not follow the rules, I'm not going to read it to you, you're very good readers.
Well, this is, we wanted to break back, so in my contract, it says annually, um, that we need to, to talk about communication between superintendent and the board. So I thought the starting point for that and I wanted to remind you that the contract, um, was to you to share again what we had in place last year and then if not tonight, soon, to talk about how it worked, what didn't work, what does work as we move forward, um, to make sure that we've got the best communication moving forward.
Okay, Dr. Bassett, I see your hands up.
Yeah, um, so I just make sure, and I kind of read through that before, but, um, actually, individuals may send a specific email to a director and directors may respond. I, I think it's great to have this protocol and all these, you know, things that you've, um, established here because I think, I don't know if we got it turned, but I think pretty much everybody follows that quite frequently. You know, so having it reiterated is not a problem. However, I do think that, you know, people, directors have direct relationships with many people across their district. And if you get, there's no bar against a director responding to constituents, none. And so am I.
Yeah, I think what I would, what I would always ask, right? And I don't think you'll talk to anybody who wouldn't say this, you know? I think that as people come to you with concerns, I think it's always great to, to try and help them and remind them of the chain of command if it's, you know, they've got a concern. And I know you know that, right? I think the other thing is if there's information that, that you don't have, you could do a couple of things. You could either, you know, include me in an email and just say, hey, I was in a conversation with so-and-so and we're wondering about X, Y and Z, can you really share the? Yep, yep, so I think that's, I think that's how we want to get, I just, I want to be sure you have the information you need as you're talking.
I guess the point I was making is that I, I, that's very appropriate, makes a whole lot of sense. But I think that it's, should be clear to the community and they already know that because they already do it. Individuals in the community do send emails to specific directors from time to time and there's nothing wrong with that, there are constituents. And, um, and so I just make, and it, and often I will ask them if it's something sensitive, do you, I, I want to let you know, I'm going to share this with the superintendent, is that okay with you? I mean, so, uh, no surprises, I'm, I'm not, you know, shouldn't be any surprises either.
Then the other thing in there where it says if you're emailing a staff member, include the superintendent. And I was like, oh, sometimes I just like to say, I went to the plane, I just really enjoyed the way that you directed it. And I thought, yes, that's good to include the superintendent on also because then the teacher gets the recognition from me and, and the superintendent sees it, so that makes sense. At first I was like, well, I just want to let her know that she did such a great job. But then I said, let her know and also by letting the superintendent know, that's even better. So that's just another part of it.
Well, then we'll try that and just send emails to Joel.
Joel, this laptop's not working, so.
Include her on.
I'll come, I'll come.
Just include her on. Okay, any other questions on that? Super, where's my agenda? Moving on.
So the other thing on here is again, it says in my contract that on August, no later than August first of two thousand fourteen and I think annually after that, two thousand twenty-four, then annually after that, um, something about my, my goals. So right, this is the time of year as I'm closing the door with the people that I supervise on the year and then listen to them about what they believe their goals are. I, and then I might insert or have ideas or we do it together, I want to do the same, same with you. Is to, um, I've obviously reflected on the evaluation process. I know the heavy lifting that we've engaged in and I know what's in front of me as a superintendent, our team and all of you into, to, to the next year. So I want to just share some focus areas with you and then happy. So I want to just share some focus areas with you and then happy to get input that you have. Barb Doran shared this with me, that she said she's sharing with districts now as, they're thinking about what's most important. She said, there's high priorities, these are important, there's higher priorities, these are even more important, and then there's the highest priority, these are most important and what the superintendent's performance expectations should be based on. I'm still responsible for everything else, but the highest priorities should set performance expectations. So I think, you know, as I reflect on the last year's evaluation, I think I had nine different elements. I think moving into next year, it makes sense to have fewer than that. And I would say probably the four areas right now that I think are going to be most important and then you may have agree or disagree or have other things that you want me to consider or having my goals. The workaround that we've been talking about, the reimagine, vision 2030 work, what it will mean to take that team's work to you and work with you on ultimately you determining decisions and, and what it is, the direction that, that you'll approve us going forward, whether that means school closures, boundary changes, facility needs, preparing for bonds, whatever that is, we have huge work. So I believe somewhere in there, you know, that's going to be a bulk of time the entire year into probably the next couple of years. Community engagement, communication will be a huge part of that and continuing to, to work with our community on that. I think the second area that we also interconnected is creating and implementing the statutory operating debt plan. I think a third area and it just continues to be very clear to me every day is as I look at a very new team, how do I ensure that I am supporting them to be high functioning, creating systems of support, clarity and efficiency and ultimately getting improved results and moving the system forward. We continue to uncover daily systems that aren't where they need to be. And so in every area, we have a whole lot of work to do and it's on me to provide the support to our team that needs to do that. And then lastly, you know, you approved in May the district priority work based on the strategic plan, obviously that's always going to be a part of what we do. So I think those are big goal areas and happy to hear any input suggestions that you have as well.
Holmes, the best. I was just going to see if we can continue this conversation, we will have to, because this is a big topic that deserves focus. We used to say we were done at 10, but I, to give, give you the focus and feedback, I would appreciate doing it on a different evening.
Do you find that I didn't want it to come back on me that I didn't have a conversation with you all before August 1st? So I want to make sure that I get it done and then I'm very clear from this board what those goals are, what those deliverables are moving forward, so fine, that's fine.
Okay, and I would agree on, you go ahead first.
Thank you. Well, I was just going to address you and say chair, when can we have a time that the board talks about the goals that we would like to see too? I see it as a partnership and there's nothing that's on the superintendent, thank you for that, there's nothing on your list that I don't think, you know, it's all a great idea, so I'm not opposed to any of that. So, but, excuse me.
I thought you were done.
Sorry, I wasn't. We just did the superintendent's evaluation, I think a lot of good feedback came up, was discussed during that process. I would like a time for the board to look at that and determine collectively if there's some areas of focus that we think are important, that's a board discussion and which it's merrier to the superintendent's input always. I, the superintendent's always had a majority of the input into whatever we settle as elements, whatever we settle as, for all of those things, it's always a process, so I never would want to interfere with that, but also it's always been just a part that the board talks about things and the goals, you know, so that we can land in a good place. That's, and historically been the way we've done it. In fact, the board has always had some, a couple of directors, I think three directors were here when we had a conversation about it and selected focus areas and those kinds of things were previous superintendent, so it's not new.
It's not new to you, it is to me.
Oh, no, no, I meant to say.
No, no, and I think that's great part of my learning is that's the way that you have done it here, I've never had.
And that's okay, and that's okay, that's why I directed my conference to our chair and not to you.
Yep.
And so, in fact, I said everything that you've said, there's nothing I would argue with, so that's done. I mean, you know, but, but the conversation will come back together at a future time and I think Director Holmes asked for some further conversation about the board, but I think that process that the board did in the past, which the board looked at the elements and things and so I should look at them too and if they're the same or different, because what are those things? What, what I heard you say is that there are nine, you'd like there to be fewer, you know, you don't say any more than that to me now, but if you look at those and we can identify what they are, I want to make sure that we end up in a good place next year and that, that we all feel like that we had our input into what we're looking at and looking for, because historically that's is what I'm used to, that's what we've always done, we've done it year after year after year after year and it's based on MSBA. We take those elements, we're not going to go anything crazy and new, we take those elements and we identify which ones we think are important and we marry that information together.
How would you feel about if she made the draft of her goals and then?
Give it to us.
Pardon me?
And give it to us, I hope, you know, that'd be fine.
Right, and then kind of lining them up with the MSBA stuff so that we don't have to like wordsmith and stuff and then we get to discuss and have it, but maybe?
Because superintendent's info would be vital, I mean.
If she could draft it out.
What are she drafts? Is her draft of whatever she's thinking and then the board has its own work? That's a separate thing for us to look at the elements ourselves and recommend among ourselves if there's some ones we think are important, that's our work.
That's an option.
Oh, okay, well, I'm just, I was not opposed to what she said in the beginning. I mean, I, you know, the thing I said, it sounded like I didn't was opposed to what you were saying. Well, I don't need interpretation.
So my phone's telling me my bedtime was.
Mine, mine is too.
Mine too.
Director Holmes. I just want to emphasize to another session, yeah, I don't know where, I'm on the 27th now, so it's probably not going to happen for August 1st, so I acknowledge, thank you for stating the contract piece, but it needs to happen soon rather than later, it suggests, so, because that's what we all agreed upon after the evaluation is that we were going to come together as a board and talk. So I guess I'm putting that on us on the agenda of team to get that scheduled.
Be good.
Okay, thank you. Many knowledge, okay, did you see it in your packet? This is what's going to come before, so at our next meeting, we had asked for input and so I want to credit, can I credit that? Beth Jever, great title probably since we're not. Oh, okay, thank you. Chief Director.
Yep. Chief in integration.
Chief in integration, thank you. If you wrote, if you read it, I think it's very well written and there's two parts to it. The first part is that we support and authorize a regular reading of a land acknowledgement statement at school board meetings by a board director and at other appropriate district events. And the other one is about tribal flags that Robbinsdale supports the public display of the 11 federally recognized tribal relations in Minnesota at the Education Service Center Boardroom with the goal of implementation beginning August 18th and contingent on the approval August 4th. So we'll vote on this August 4th, so figure out how to place the flags and then they will be displayed at the 18th. Odokey? Please tell me now if you have a problem with voting positive and then affirmative on this. Any qualms or any questions, get them out now. Director Long.
If I'm at an event, but I just want to be at the event as a community person, do I have to land acknowledgement if it's a part of that event?
I can hear you. No, 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 someone will read it, you do not have.
I was just reading that, that last one word, it says or at district events. You're required to.
Okay, we'll get that fixed, yeah, we'll get that fixed. It will be read at events, but it won't be read by one of us unless we're invited.
Okay, I, I will agree to that.
Okay.
If we're invited to read it at a district event, then yes.
No, that is not, that is not intent, so that, this will probably be tweaked a little bit before the next meeting.
I just don't want to show up at Ice Cream Social and then they're like, oh, you're here, so now you have to.
Thank goodness, you can read this important statement, no? We'll get that fixed, thank you.
Not that I'm opposed to reading it, but.
But I know, but you'd rather.
I'd rather whoever was originally assigned to it.
You'd rather it listen.
Yeah, read it, yeah.
Okay, and then we had talked about inviting people from AIPAC, so would they be invited to the vote or would they be invited to the actual, when it's first?
The slides are, which?
Masked.
When would you have even one or both?
Are you kidding? I suppose we could just let AIPAC know this is, we're planning on voting on this date and the contention on it being approved, it starts the 18th, we'll let them have a vote and then they can just make it onto traces. I can do it, we can do that. All right, wonderful, one right along.
Yeah, that answers everything.
All right.
Just have one.
I totally have a bunch already. Well, I just think that that's a, it's a, it's a very important statement and it's coming from our board and I think our board chair should just read it or our board chair or a director, but I think it should be the board chair. You, the board chair manages and facilitates all our board, the whole meeting.
Who's that? I'm a director.
But I'm just saying, I'm just asking, like, just, and then the board director, you know, that, that's all. And then we can just.
Well, I know at 287 and they have, they have the admission statement read by individual board members and it rotates around the room, people are picked out to read it and I think the board involvement in this type of a proclamation is, is, goes a long way. I, I would just disagree that it should always be the board chair that by passing it around the room, that might mean once and a half times a year you would read it.
Let's start with baby steps, I'll start with reading it, see.
Okay. I like the word, the board director.
It's going to, I am a board director, so I'm fine. We're going to go with baby steps here. Okay, next thing, in a moment of weakness, we agreed to do a quiz poll with students. Technically Director Long brought it up, brought it up, it's all on her, but I followed him through.
I'm going to just phone a friend while we do it.
No, you can't. Anyway, I talked with, I talked with Representative Fryberg, these are high school students, these are not middle school students, so it's not are you smarter than a sixth grader? This is high school students, one of them was invited to compete at a national level and I said, how can we prepare for this? And he said, oh, it's just common knowledge stuff. I said, great, so they're not available in August, but they are available as like a tip off in before one of our September meetings.
What does that entail?
Public embarrassment, any of this. Okay.
Let's just choose one.
We're going to have to have real board team like you.
Why are we doing it with those dates that are coming up?
This is going to be, this is going to be before.
What is it, 10 minutes?
It'll be like a five o'clock before a board meeting, okay? We'll do it for a half, non-optional, half an hour, like at a five o'clock. So I will be emailing you guys and you're going to let me know which of the two meetings works best for you or if it doesn't matter for a five o'clock before one of our September meetings because we made the commitment and we are not backing down on that. Okay.
I think we can decide now because they, using 2023's, 2010, September, right?
The 2018.
No, not five o'clock. This is before the board meeting, we're not going to, this is not.
We can make it optional, it's just.
Okay.
I don't need anybody to know.
I can't make it, I'm worried. Oh my goodness.
I have watched some celebrity Jeopardy, so I'm ready.
The only fun is we got a team.
I have Google, I have Google, are, are we?
Not nearly.
Okay, guys.
Future agenda topics, never mind, do we have anything that we have to, have to talk about? I'm sorry, it's time to conclude the session. Thank you very much, everybody, we'll finish up another session. Now we have a close session.